The Lane County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting to order for Tuesday, April 14th, 2015. And the first item is adjustments to the agenda. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? I will mention that we have two time certens today. We have one for 9:30 and one for 10 o'clock. And then we have a very lengthy executive session we're going to try and get to this morning, so we will have to keep things moving today. So, without any further adjustments to the agenda, we'll move into public comment. We have two folks signed up for public comment. And if you'll come forward to the podium, you'll have three minutes for your public comment. If you'll state your name and the city you're from for the record. The first person is Bryce Kribel. If I said that correctly?
I'm close. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Bryce Kribel. I live in Eugene, near the fairgrounds, but I also work for Lane County in the Assessment and Taxation Department. And I'm here this morning to talk to you about an initiative that we started known as LCAT Cares, Lane County Assessment and Taxation Cares. We started this committee last year, in 2014, in the early spring, in May, early May. We worked on Habitat for Humanity Home on Yogi Way. Later in May, we went back and served lunch to the volunteers that were continuing to work on that Yogi Way house. In August of last year, 2014, we paired with the Obsidian Club and helped do trail restoration on Spencer Butte Trail. And then in the holiday season, we worked with our Holiday Committee, Lane County Assessment and Taxation's Holiday Committee. We gathered supplies, hygiene products, and other things for women's space, and for gathered art supplies for the Oregon Supported Living Programs Art and Culture Program. The idea of this committee was to show another face of assessment and taxation. I think a lot of times we're perceived as bringing people's money into us. We wanted to give something back to the community. So, our goals are to initiate and execute at least two projects this year. Select projects that have a real property focus, land and homes, to be visible in the community and put our boots on the ground, if you will. We also want to partner with existing programs rather than try to create something on our own as a matter of just resource. And then provide opportunities for all the assessment and taxation staff to participate. Not everybody should swing a hammer, but find ways to find opportunities for them to join in. So, the reason that I'm here today is we're starting the 2015 LCAT Cares projects with a fundraiser supporting Habitat for Humanity. On the 28th of this month, they'll be hosting a breakfast, and the breakfast is a "Build a House in an Hour" campaign. There's a number of sponsors who've already committed $35,000 to build another Habitat Home in the Eugene-Springfield area. Habitat's relying on contributions from the public to raise the other 35, for a total of $70,000, which is their cost to construct. So, LCAT Cares has issued a department challenge to all the counties, or all the departments, rather, in Lane County, asking them to meet or exceed a $500 donation that we can turn into Habitat on the 28th of this month. And we'd just like to have your support. We'd like to have your endorsement. Steve has been very good in supporting us, and we certainly appreciate that. But I'm here to advocate, and I'm here to encourage everybody in Lane County to participate. And if you could lead the way by showing us a good example, we'd certainly appreciate it. I think that's all I have to say this morning. I thank you very much for your time, Commissioners. Hope you have a great day.
Thank you, Bryce. Next, we have Webb Sussman.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Webb Sussman. I live in West Eugene. And I'm here today because I'm, I have some, well, I have a basic question, which is why the commission schedule isn't a live calendar on its website? Which in turn, I started looking at that, and I started looking at this as an example, the City of Eugene's website, where you can subscribe to calendars for everything, from the budget committee, to the bicycle advisory committee, to the sanitation committee, if they have one. These calendars get automatically updated. They get, if there were adjustments made to the agenda, those adjustments get made automatically, and they get pushed out to things like your laptops, or your iPads, or your iPhones. And I'm wondering why the county hasn't taken steps to make it easy to follow what the Commissioners are doing, and follow what some of the committees that the county has are doing, like the Roads Advisory Committee being a perfect example. That in turn led me to some other questions in looking at the website, because I started to dig into the website, and the website is the county's primary marketing mechanism, if you will, for economic development, among other things, also for tourism. And the website that's currently in place was probably good for that, or good as a tool for that circa 1982, 1983 perhaps. It's very, very hard to do, as you look and go through things, it's very hard to do business with the county on the website. It's also very unclear on the website what the county is trying to push, if you will, for economic development, what the county is trying to bring forward as opportunities for companies that are looking to come into the area. And I think the county is missing a huge opportunity and is perhaps costing themselves when companies are looking at competing areas. We're losing out because we don't look like we have a clue. This may not be fair to the IT folk. I know that the IT division has been, as most branches of the county, have been starved for funding for many years. And I recognize that everybody here is in a very tough position in terms of budget. But at the same time, if we can use this tool to provide economic development and provide an impetus to move the county forward, I think we ought to be taking advantage of it, and we're not currently. That's my concern this morning. I appreciate your time, and thank you.
Thank you. So, is there anyone else that wishes to address the board this morning? Sure, it looks like our assessor wishes to address us. Mr. Coles.
Good morning, Commissioners. I come here this morning to express my sincere gratitude and thanks for all the work that Bryce and the Assessment and Taxation staff, and with the support of the county administration, has had for the LCAT Cares project. To me, this is sincerely a very important project, both for the side of the county and also for the community. Habitat for Humanity has been a longstanding organization to help build houses and put members of the community in homes that, without this organization, would not have a home to live in. And the challenge that Bryce puts forward to the different, to the departments of Assessment and Taxation is very important in that the county does show support in many different ways for such projects. And I just wanted to start out the challenge for other departments and the county administration, and even the Commissioners, for pledging $500 myself to the project. And that'll give a boost as far as, independent of the A&amp;T donations, to the $35,000 that needs to be raised. I appreciate your support and the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there, oh, I think there's some handouts coming around here, Pat. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the board this morning? If not, we'll move on to Commissioners' response to public comments and/or other issues and remonstrance. And I think I would like to call on the county administrator right now to address maybe Mr. Sussman's public comment, because it just so happens we're in the middle of a project to redesign our website, so public input into that process would be great. But if you'd like to kind of really briefly update us on that process, we're in the process we're in right now.
Yes. I'd be happy to, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, and thank you for your public comment today. It's, I think we would, many of us would agree that we have an opportunity for improvement on our website. It's about five or six years since Lane County's existing website was first developed, and that's about the time that you want to start taking another look. And we have done that. I can announce today that we anticipate tomorrow we'll release an RFP, a request for proposals, on our website to redo that website to a new website. And so we have a project team that's been developed. Diana Jones and County Administrator's Office is leading this along with our IRS department. We're looking for a website ultimately that will accomplish many of the things that Mr. Sussman identified, emergency notifications, updates on board meetings, agenda changes to the public, highlighting certain issues, allowing for more 360-type feedback from the community and engagement of our residents, as well as just more of a presence, highlighting things like economic development and other areas. So, we look for, we will bring updates back to the board. This is going to take a matter of, you know, probably six to nine months at least for us to go through a thoughtful process to evaluate qualified vendors to provide the consulting work that is necessary to get that done, as well as for all of our departments to participate in the updating content and everything. But we're moving on that project and really excited to make some progress. And again, we'll be back with further updates with you.
Excellent. Any other? Mr. Sussman?
Thank you very much. One thing that I've always been an advocate of is for the county to maintain a list of people that want to get information from the county. We have, I know our media folks over the years have really perfected a sort of blast email list for news media. I know the Sheriff's Office has done that on matters that pertain to law enforcement. But I wanted to just give my support to the idea of having a much broader outreach so that when people attend meetings like the Board of Commissioners' meetings, or they attend any one of the more than 50 advisory committee meetings, that there, there's an opportunity for them to say, yes, I'd like additional information from the county. I don't pretend to know how that would be used in terms of providing it, but at a minimum they could get the calendar and news releases. And given today's technology, they can always opt out if it's too much information and they don't really want as much information as we really do generate, because we do generate a lot. But I think that it's a, it's a form of outreach that shows that we want to share that information broadly. And yes, it is possible that people could get that information if they spent the time to ask for it, but the whole idea here is to provide as expensive means as possible to have that information go out to the public, and particularly the public that shows up to meetings and shows up to care about the multifaceted work we do. So, anyway, thanks so much, Mr. Sussman, for coming in. I know you've had a long history of involvement in trying to use technology to make life better for people. I really appreciate it. And I also appreciate your attention to our economic development struggles, and thanks for coming in.
Commissioner Farr and Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you, Commissioner Bolzovich. And thank you for asking Mr. Mokraheisi to comment on the, on the process that he's going through right now. And I want to commend you on being proactive right from the very beginning and recognizing that we needed to work on our outreach. You've been doing this since the day that you got here, and I, I know that if Ms. Jones is listening right now, I know if you and she have been working very closely. I'm really on a fast track at this point in time, looking forward with the communication through the website. And I'm really looking forward to it. And I believe that some of the things that Mr. Sussman commented on, and some of the things that Commissioner Sussman just commented on, are already in the pipeline. So, it's just looking forward to the progress. And stand your back, we'll have your back. Thank you, Mr. Mokraheisi.
Commissioner Stewart.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. And I want to thank our A&amp;T staff, Bryce, and the folks at LCAT Cares, I guess. I'd like to see if there's support to have a discussion with this under Commissioners' Business, just add it to the agenda. I'd like to see if there's support to individually give from our office accounts to meet the challenge that was given today. So, can we do that?
Sure.
So, thank you for coming and the great work that you're doing. And Mr. Sussman, I, I know I get folks in my district that ask for this information. I believe that if we can get your email, we can at least get you started on receiving the calendar as it's updated each fairly regular, and get you plugged into the agendas and get all that information coming your way if you already, if you don't have it already. So, I think you got my contact information and can send me that request if you'd like.
Mr. Lichen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I would just echo the comments by Webb, Mr. Sussman, excuse me. And really appreciate you, the comments. And also, I would agree with Commissioner Stewart. I think it's great to bring this up under Commissioners' Business, LCAT Cares. I like that. Anyway, and by the way, it was very apropos that Bryce actually spoke on behalf, especially when you're talking about work and working with, really on a cause like this. I think I've known Bryce for a long time, and I know this was really a big passion of his, so I really appreciate it. So, it's very apropos that you were the one that came on behalf of the Assessor's Office, and thank you, Assessor Coles, as well, for the support. And I look forward to the conversation from, from the Commissioners on this, on this very topic. So, thank you.
Thank you. If there's no further remonstrance, we'll move on. Item four, emergency businesses. Is there any emergency business today, Mr. Mokraheisi? There is none. Thank you. Then we'll move on to the consent calendar. And the consent calendar is routine items that'll be considered under a single motion with no discussion. And if folks want to see the individual items under the consent calendar, they're on our website, along with links to the board packets. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Mr. Chair, I would move approval of the consent calendar.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Consent calendar passes unanimously. So, we are actually running about 10 minutes early, which I'm surprised.
Got item six.
So, item six, oh, sorry, there is one more item before the time certain. So, let's see if we can slip item six in here, and this is in the matter of electing whether or not to hear an appeal of a hearing's official's reconsidered decision on approval of a 27-lot preliminary subdivision in the rural residential zone. And that's file number 509PA-13-05697. And we have Mr. Seva here.
Good morning, Commissioners. This item is an elect to hear for an appeal of a hearing's official reconsidered decision approving a 27-lot subdivision in the rural residential zone in the floodplain combining zone. The 58-acre property is currently the site of the Mackenzie River Golf Course. The property is bounded by the Mackenzie River on the north and Hoggan Creek on the south. The application was submitted on December 19th, 2013, and deemed incomplete on January 19th, 2014. The applicant submitted additional information on January 27th, and the processing of the application commenced. The planning director issued a denial of the application on October 8th, 2014. The applicant, represented by Bill Close, appealed the director's denial to the hearing's official. The hearing's official in turn denied the application on December 24th, 2014. The applicant appealed the hearing's official denial and requested the hearing's official reconsider his decision and allow additional testimony into the record. The hearing's official agreed, and on March 3rd, 2015, issued a reconsidered decision approving the application. On March 16th, Sean T. Malone, representing appellant Nina Levinger, filed an appeal of the hearing's official's reconsidered decision. The central issue for this application has been compliance with Lane Code 130509, which outlines certain requirements for land divisions in dangerous areas, including flood hazard areas. The hearing's official's decisions contain extensive discussions of this provision. To address this provision on reconsideration, the applicant submitted a floodplain habitat analysis report prepared by a professional biologist. The hearing's official found that this report adequately addressed his initial concerns and incorporated a number of recommendations as conditions of approval. The appellant in the appeal now before the board takes issue with the findings and conclusions contained in the submitted report and in the hearing's official's decision. It's now up to the board to determine whether or not to hear the appeal. The criteria for this decision is outlined in Lane Code 14600. The first general requirement is that the board can make a final decision within the time constraints established by ORS 215427. As explained in the Agenda cover memo, it's unclear if the applicant's timeline waivers submitted during the first round of appeals are still in effect. Lane Code 14600 also contains specific criteria should the board be interested in hearing this, this appeal, which are whether the issues are of countywide significance, whether the issues will recur with frequency, and if there's a need for policy guidance, whether the issues involve a unique environmental resource, and whether the planning director or hearing's official recommends review. For the reasons set forth in the Agenda cover memo, the planning director believes that the appeal does not meet these criteria and recommends the board not hear the appeal. I'd point out that the appellant has specifically requested that the board not hear the appeal, and on Friday, staff received an email from the applicant that supports staff's recommendation not to hear the appeal. That concludes my comments.
Any questions for staff? Commissioner Stewart.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Mr. Seva, I, when I was reading through this item, I got to essentially the grounds for their appeal. And I was wondering had staff looked at their grounds and feel that the decision was made, you know, still backs the decision of the hearing's official, or any concerns about what's been brought up? And I, I just say right off the bat, it says the hearing's official misconstrued the applicable law. So, if our hearing's official potentially, and our staff might, might agree or not agree, if, if the hearing's official's, you know, not applying the law applicable, then I would think that it would be a, you know, an item that we'd want to discuss with the board. So, I'd like to hear, do you feel the decision was appropriate, and these will just be determined by Luba?
Yeah, the hearing's official reviewed the appeal and determined that it didn't warrant him to reconsider his decision or open up his decision for any additional issues. And I think the planning director agrees that his, his decision adequately addresses the issues at hand. I'd note that a lot of the issues that are cited in the appeal statement were raised during the appeals process, and some of those issues were addressed extensively by the applicant.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that these weren't new and hadn't been, you know, looked at, that the board wasn't just blanketly moving forward. Because if, to me, if, if we had some concern, it would, it would justify reviewing or hearing. So, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? So, is there a motion relative to this?
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Lichen.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move order 15-04-14-07, the matter of not to hear an appeal of a hearing's official's reconsidered decision in approving a 27-lot preliminary subdivision in the rural residential zone, RR-2. So, not to hear.
And is that with the, supporting the hearing's official?
Supporting the hearing's official, yes, that's correct.
Yes. What's the recommend, recommend?
On the recommendation, appeal of a hearing's official's reconsidered decision. Okay, that's what I forgot to add. Thank you. Should have read the whole thing. Appeal of a hearing's official's reconsidered decision approving the 27-lot preliminary subdivision in the rural residential zone. Here we go.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there concern, Andy? You were affirming the hearing's officials?
Yes.
Yeah, I think, I think.
We're affirming the hearing's official.
That's right. I just wanted to add a bit, if I could, to clarify what you're doing by approving the order. There are a couple of different orders we've done in the past when the board decides not to conduct the hearing and just allow it to move on to Luba. One is simply to agree with what the hearing's official has decided and move on. The other is to agree with the hearing's official and specifically adopt the interpretation that the hearing's official has given to Lane Code. And that's what the order before you would do, and I understand that's the motion that's been made to approve that order.
Commissioner Sussman.
So, is this a motion to not have, not hear the appeal, or is it to not hear the appeal and approve the decision? Which of those is it?
It's option one, which is to not hear the appeal and affirm the hearing's official's decision, rather than remaining silent.
Yeah, good. In the past, I think some of us have taken the view that, well, it's one thing to not have the appeal, not have the hearing here, to allow the appellant to take it to the state, and it's another thing to specifically agree with the decision, so.
But the, the motion as stands is to affirm the hearing's official's decision. So, any further discussion to the motion? Seen and hearing none? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries 4-1. Thank you, Mr. Seva. And we'll move on to county administration announcements, and you've got about two or three minutes, and then we'll have to interrupt you before a time certain.
No problem. The first thing I wanted to do is just recognize the new signs that we have here in Harris Hall. Hopefully, everyone's had a chance to see these, and we're really pleased with it. What we've shared with the board is the idea here was really to recognize our city partners, our 12 cities throughout Lane County, and give them a prominent place in Harris Hall. And we're really pleased with how that's turned out. So, we have the western half of Lane County, the cities in the western half of Lane County are, are on the left hand, to my left, and the cities on the eastern side of Lane County are to my right, and they're distributed by population. And we want to thank our city partners for sharing their logos with us. And of course, we have a number of initiatives that we're pursuing with our cities, not the least of which is a ballot measure on May 19th that seeks road funding, a portion of which would go to Lane County, and a portion of which would go to all of our cities throughout Lane County. And so that's one example of many areas that we're working together with our cities and that we will continue to. So, a little symbolic nod to the recognition that we have many vibrant communities here in Lane County, and we truly are a community of communities. And I want to thank, in addition to our city partners, thank Funk Levis, who designed the layout of the signs, and appropriately, Harris Design, printed and installed the, the signs for Harris Hall. So, we're pleased with that. I also would like to give you a quick election update from Cheryl Betchart, our county clerk. 730 out-of-country and military ballots were mailed on the statutory deadline of April 3rd. The voter's pamphlet will be 28 pages. It is complete, and about 170, 187 hours of staff time spent on that voter pamphlet, so a lot of work there in putting that together, and we're pleased with how that was able to come together, the first time in 16 years. I think previously we had said it was about 20 years. We verified it's been 16 years since Lane County's done a voter pamphlet. The two-day testing of the 266 ballot styles and the tabulating equipment has been completed, and the out-of-state ballots are scheduled to be mailed on April 20th. So, a quick election update for you. I think we're at 9:30. I have one other announcement that I'll defer until after 9:30.
Quick comment from Commissioner Stewart.
Mr. Mokraheisi, I want to thank you very much for putting this, these city logos up here. A while back, I was able to attend a meeting, and I was giving testimony to the land use, or actually LCDC, from that position, and I don't know how anybody was able to sit on that side of the dais. on that side of the dais, because, I mean, I felt like I was a drunk sailor, you know, getting dizzy and stuff, and so I really appreciate the thought that was given, and I think it's great. The only thing I had to add, and I like to think about it, is that I still sitting there reviewing it, if my eyes wandered too low, I still had that slight issue, so I thought maybe it might be nice to put our vision or something that we adopted as something that could show the folks what's our guiding principles through our goal setting session. So just an idea, but thank you very much for addressing that. I don't know why we didn't receive any complaints until I said something, because I couldn't do that, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I'd actually heard that same complaint from a few different people about the wood patterns causing a little bit of vertigo. So we'll move on to our time certain now. Very quickly, Commissioner Farr.
I'll just mention the drunk sailor analogy. That explains a lot of things I've seen in this hall. Thank you.
Oh, my. And with that, we'll move on to our time certain. Item seven B, which is order fifteen oh four fourteen oh eight, in the matter of authorizing the county administrator to sign agreements with the city of Springfield and the Swanson Group Manufacturing LLC to extend the property tax exemption two years for veneer peeling and plywood layup mill in the downtown Springfield area. And we have Sarah Case in the queue of her guests. I'll let you introduce your guests.
Yes, thank you, Chair Bozovich, commissioners. Good morning, and thank you for your time today. We're here to speak with you on the matter before you regarding the Springfield Community Enterprise Zone. Today, we have with us John Tanyalinas with the city of Springfield, and Cameron Cross with Swanson Group was kind enough to join us today. Real briefly, I don't want to take too much of your time today, but Lane County is a co-sponsor of the Springfield Community Enterprise Zone, and as such, the board is being asked to consider authorizing the county administrator to sign agreements with the city of Springfield and the Swanson Group to extend property tax exemption for two years for a veneer peeling and plywood layup mill in the downtown Springfield area. I believe you may all recall last, I believe it was July, when that mill was lost to a fire, and it was very devastating to the community. Over the past several months, the Swanson Group has been considering their options, and it's our understanding that they are going to rebuild the mill in the city of Springfield, but have asked both the city of Springfield and Lane County to consider an enterprise zone benefit extension. Typically, there would be a three-year exemption on property taxes, and they've requested an additional two years to make that a five-year exemption on their proposed forty-four-point-eight-five million to fifty-four-point-seven-five million veneer peeling and plywood layup operation. A three-year exemption generally requires the firm to merely increase the employment level by ten percent and maintain it throughout the exemption period. The extended five-year exemption also requires that the average annual compensation level for new hires be maintained at a hundred and fifty percent of Lane County's average wage, which is thirty-eight thousand three hundred and fifty-three, or above fifty-seven five hundred and thirty thousand throughout the five-year exemption. So Swanson has indicated that they will indeed not only increase their employment, but also meet or exceed the hundred and fifty percent of the average annual wage requirement, which is fairly significant. The firm expects to finish constructing the facility in the fall of 2016 and employ about a hundred and ninety employees at full operation. The application that was submitted does indicate that the firm's employment averaged seventy-eight employees over the previous twelve months, based on nearly two hundred and fifty full-time employees before the fire, and since then, just four employees most recently at the facility. So we are speaking to some significant jobs in the Springfield area, in for Lane County. So I would just note that in our analysis, you know, this certainly does meet the board goals that you've adopted in terms of creating and helping to facilitate vibrant communities with strong economic development focus. So with that, I will open it up to questions from the board, and both Mr. Tanyalinas and Mr. Cross are available to answer questions as well.
Thank you. And before we move on, I just want to thank Mr. Cross and the folks at Swanson for deciding to rebuild this mill in Lane County. It's a huge thing for Lane County. Really appreciate that. Questions from the board? Commissioner Stewart.
Mr. Chair, thank you. I don't have any questions. I too wanted to extend a thank you to Cameron and the folks at Swanson Group. You took the time and invited me to tour and showed me the plans for the site, and very excited that you chose and had the opportunity to rebuild and produce a specialty product there that is only produced, I think, in one other place, if my memory is correct. So a very, very good opportunity for us to produce a manufactured product that adds value and brings resources here, so appreciate that. And, you know, also appreciate the fact that you're committing that, you know, to pay a hundred and fifty percent of wages, and I know that in my conversations with individuals that most of these are going to be new jobs. The folks that worked there before have been placed in other places. Individuals that I've talked to that are friends that I know that used to work there are, you know, I asked them, I say, hey, with the mill being rebuilt, would you consider going back? Because I know that they probably want you back, and they said, well, you know, we're relocated, or we've taken on another job and probably will just stay. So, you know, that's a good opportunity that, you know, when you get this completed, that another a hundred and ninety jobs. So I appreciate that, and fully support this request and the efforts. Thank you.
Mr. Storson.
Thank you very much. Maybe you or John could address this, and that is, Commissioner Stewart just mentioned that he'd had a tour and learned more about it. Could you describe what the city of Springfield and what Lane County did to make this recommendation? In other words, did you visit? Did you go over it with them? Is there some kind of committee either at the city of Springfield or Lane County that reviews these things? Could you describe that?
So I'll defer to Mr. Tanyalinas, who is the enterprise zone manager for the Springfield Enterprise Zone.
We brought this proposal to the Springfield City Council, and they looked at it and approved it as it stands right now. We looked at the number of employees that would be there based on the average employment, which actually is in your packet towards the end. It shows the calculation that's necessary under state requirements to do that. And so it's met that minimum and exceeded by a wide margin. The value of the plant is substantially higher than the value of the facility that was lost. It's also a much more modernized and updated plant with its, opened up some new markets, which makes us very happy about that part. One of the other requirements is that the company also sign a first-source hiring agreement with Lane Workers Partnership in the state of Oregon, so that they notify them five days in advance of their needing new employees, and the state can provide them with a list of potential employees that might be able to be employed at the plant. Those are pretty much the minimum requirements. We've been working very closely with the company in trying to make sure that they can meet the timeline. They did have a number of opportunities to locate the plant elsewhere, and the company wanted to be assured that they could get through the planning process and the building permits that are necessary to meet the deadlines, to get them to an open facility and a timeline that's probably the fall of 2016, maybe October or November, somewhere in that area. And that aligns quite nicely with what we're able to perform for them as they get the facility up and running. So they had choices to go elsewhere. We tried to make it as straightforward and easy as possible for them to get the facility rebuilt. This certainly helps them, given the uncertainty that they have in the wood products industry and ups and downs in the economy, we want to make sure that they have the best chance of getting this facility out there and in place, and so far, everything seems to be pointing in that direction. Newspaper, TV media interviewed me once, and they said, so what's this like? And I said, the analogy I have is for going to college. You invest four years in sort of a college education, and you end up with an income substantially longer than that. In this case, it's a relatively brief in the lifetime of a mill that's been there for sixty or seventy years, so we're looking at four years of, five years of property tax exemption through the enterprise zone, and then we hope a very long life after that with the products that'll be coming out of that plant, the employment that'll be there. Okay, and you mentioned that you yourself had worked with the application. My question really dealt with, is there some kind of committee, or is there a group of people that scrutinize this, or basically between Swanson Group, you, and our staff, is there anybody else that's looked at this proposal and said, oh, all the things that are in the proposal are accurate, and it looks like a good thing for the community? Or is it simply a matter of meeting the minimum criteria and exceeding it, if possible, of the state requirements? It's pretty much meeting the minimum requirements. We have not asked for any additional requirements from the firm, given that the short timeline, the requirements that it seems to be far exceeding what we typically would have when considering these things in the past. Lane County Assessment and Taxation Staff actually looked at it, and we've had some discussions with the state in terms of the other things that are necessary to make this thing move forward as a project, not as an enterprise zone exemption, and they've all said it looks like it meets all the necessary requirements of that. Okay. What's the amount of the investment? It's like a lot of money to rebuild a mill. What is the amount? Well, in the last part, in Exhibit A of the application, it ranges from, there's a range of value, because not everything's been purchased yet. It's forty-four-point-eight-five million to fifty-four-point-seven-five million, so in that range. Yeah, the existing land out there, there'll be people paying taxes on that, and the existing buildings are, there's a little equipment remaining that was spared from the fire, that would still be property tax, it would be paid. What will the plant be making?
I'll have to defer to the, veneer and plywood, overlay plywood. It's a specialty plywood product that's used in a variety of applications, but it's not your part of the mill, sheeting product, commodity product, so it's more of a specialty product that's used all over North America, and frankly, we ship some of it to Panama and other places for.
And the market must be pretty good for that, given the amount of investment you're putting into it?
Yeah, we think it's a wise investment at this point. We looked at a lot of different products, and we're excited about the direction we're heading.
Okay, thank you very much. Someone indicated to me in one of the discussions that we had just in the last week or so, that when this plant went out of operations a year ago, it represented about three percent of the national production of lumber. Prices went up ten percent after that plant burned. So this is a fairly critical piece for not only the community, but the state and the Northwest.
Okay. Commissioner Lichen, then Commissioner Farr in the queue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Cameron, I really appreciate the fact that Swanson is willing to move forward on this, and thank you as well for the tour and showing them the plans, the future plans. Question for Mr. Tanyalinas, and he's sure not going to brag about himself, but I'm going to, so I think in this area, we're very blessed to have. John Tanyalinas is probably one of the most foregone experts on enterprise zones in the state, and I know communities throughout this entire state actually reached out to John and talked to him about enterprise zone applications and how it works. When I was mayor, I went through a few, and, but John, if you could maybe explain the difference, because there's a couple, there's the three-year, and there's the five-year. And the five-year actually requires a little bit more commitment. Maybe if you could explain just that additional why they're able to, first of all, gain the five-year, and because it's fairly common for the three-year? We've done a few of those. I think the five-year of this one, I believe it's Cementech's second phase, and maybe in the bakery, I think?
Sony.
Sony originally, yeah.
U.S. Bakery, and that was relocation to allow Matarina to be built, and Cementech was the other one.
So maybe if you could briefly just talk about the commitment level that's happening here, because there is additional requirements to receive the five-year, maybe if you could go through that real quickly, because I think the part that's important is this really mean, this is a long-term investment by the Swanson Group, so maybe if you could touch on that briefly?
Sure, be glad to. Typical three-year enterprise zone requires that you increase employment by ten percent over the previous twelve months' average employment, rounded up. It doesn't require any level of financial commitment or compensation for the employees that you might have there, but it does require that you notify if there's any changes in the operations during that period of time, and if you don't meet your requirements of numbers, you have to repay that. Also, the investment has to be qualifying, and you do have to submit your applications. We've had a couple of firms that have actually not submitted the request for the tax abatement, and they've not received it that year, and so that was kind of a shocking thing for some firms to have missed that. In this case, you've got a firm that is looking at a five-year exemption, which requires throughout the five-year period, not just the first three-year period or the last two years, but throughout the five-year period to meet that compensation level of a hundred and fifty percent of Lane County's average wage. They can exceed that, but they can't go below that. If they go below that, they'll be, the abatement is basically lost on that portion. So they're dealing with a five-year commitment, and they'll need to do that throughout the five-year period, as well as the requirement to do the first-source hiring agreement with the state. So that's, it's a five-year period, and they can make additional investments throughout that period, and if there was going to be a five-year exemption for any of those, we'd be coming back to the two sponsors to make sure that they both approve that. So each year, they will be submitting verification that they've done all of those things through the county tax assessor's office.
And I appreciate it, because Sarah touched on it in the very beginning as well. I think that's important to emphasize, because not only is Swanson Group making a significant capital in the assets, but this is a significant human capital investment, too, and I think that's the part that I don't think we want to, we don't need to get lost on here. That is just as important as the rebuilding of the mill, and I really appreciate that particular investment in the community, and thank you very much for, again, taking the risk, build, rebuild there, and I know Springfield appreciates that, but also Lane County as a whole. But that explanation is very key as we move forward on this, so thanks, John, for that. And again, I can't emphasize enough how important John has been to this community and really throughout the state with people seeking his thoughts and opinion. He's a humble guy on this, and he doesn't really talk about it much, but people will seek him out throughout the state on, when it comes to the enterprise zone piece itself, and really appreciate that, John, and thanks again, Cameron.
Thank you. So Commissioner Farr, and I'm placing myself in the queue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, the overlay product that you're describing, that you're going to be producing, is a high-value product that makes really good use of our natural resources, brings a high-value return on the investment, and I really commend you for putting the plant here in Springfield and bringing all the jobs. You know, we cheer pretty loudly when we bring in companies from out of the area, and we should cheer even more loudly when locals are championing, bringing jobs, high-paying jobs into the, into our market. You know, it meets a lot of our goals and a lot of the points of our strategic plan. And Mr. Mokhajsky, I wonder if you could remind us just briefly how this does fit in Lane County's strategic plan? We have a strategic plan that we're working on, and everything we do has to reflect back on the plan to make certain that we're moving forward on all fronts at all times.
Yes, one of the three priorities is vibrant communities, and the two focuses within vibrant communities is economic development, vibrancy, and natural environment, and so this fits right in certainly with our focus on creating vibrant local economies throughout all of our communities.
It really is one of the pillars of what we want to do for the future, and I'd really like to commend Ms. Case the work that you've done with Ms. Pauling, Mr. Tanyalinas, and Cameron, with you and your company. Thank you for bringing this to the Eugene-Springfield-Lane County area, and I look forward to seeing all of those people going back to work.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Farr. So I have a couple of quick questions. First, John, it's hard not to call you JT in some ways, but, yeah, because I've known it's hard not to call you JT in some ways, but, yeah, because I've known you since The Big Fish was coming to town.
Yes.
Long time. Can you describe real quick what the public notice was for the Springfield City Council meeting around this? Was there public notice given for that meeting and an opportunity for the public to comment?
There was. The council agenda goes out on Thursday prior to the meeting, which was last Monday. We've had, we had a couple of pieces of correspondence that came in in support of the enterprise zone to the office via email. And we didn't have any comment directly, as I recall, at the meeting. But the council was also very supportive, as commissioners seem to be right now, for the project move ahead. So there was both the time, an open time during the public opportunities, the public opportunity for comment at the city council being to comment on the application.
Great.
But there weren't any at that time.
And I'd ask, if you want to review real quick, Mr. Mokra Hyske, our public notice for this agenda item and opportunity to comment on the county side?
Yes, this was noticed, I believe, last Thursday. Information was posted to our website. The, was noticed in all the locations that we typically do. And everything has been available for the past several days.
And we also held open public comment this morning?
Yes.
Right. So I just wanted just a real quick review that there has been a public notice process and an opportunity for the public to chime in if they so desire. I don't know if you guys can answer these questions, but even just in ballparks, can you tell me what the assessed value of the plant was before the fire, what it is now post-fire, and what it will be post-construction of the new plant, approximates? You know, and I know the post-construction, but I understand that there was a request to drop the assessed value recently post-fire. And just any sort of idea?
I did look at some numbers, and I can't say that they were comprehensive, because I have no way of testing that. But numbers I saw before the fire were about twenty million dollars for the facilities that were on the site. They had been adding equipment over the last few years and making investments in the facility, upgrading it when the fire occurred. So it was, it'd gone from twelve to thirteen million on the primary facility with the equipment. That also includes land value, so I can't, I don't know what the split is on that right now. Post-fire, it probably dropped eighteen million dollars, would be my guess, from what it was before that, with the loss of the buildings and the equipment in it.
And it sounds like we're going to get back up to about fifty million minimum with the construction of the new plant.
Somewhere between forty-four and forty, and fifty-four million.
Yeah, plus the land and whatever existing.
It's already there.
There now. I just wanted to kind of point that out, because, you know, we went from having a facility that we were gaining the taxes on approximately twenty million dollars in value to something that now is, we're just taxing basically the land value of two million. And this opportunity to extend this enterprise zone in partnership with Swanson Group and the city of Springfield allows us to, yes, we will defer taxes for five years with the agreement to get one-hundred-and-fifty percent salaries out there, median salaries of our median, which is a pretty significant salary, family wage jobs. And in five years, we get to put back on the books fifty million dollars worth of assessed value. I think that's, you know, if we don't move forward with this, we're basically talking about sitting on, you know, two million dollars worth of land value for who knows what, and whether it even stays at two million as an empty, you know, mill site. I don't think some of our other mill sites have stayed that valued. They're constantly being downvalued as they stay empty longer and longer. So I really think this is an opportunity for, you know, all the partners to come together and, you know, get these needed jobs in our community and also eventually bring onto our books in five years a very large taxable value. Whereas if we didn't come to this agreement and partnership, this facility could be built somewhere else and we'd just end up sitting on raw land. And I think that's a significant thing to put out there is what we're really leveraging with this agreement. So I appreciate, you know, Swanson's commitment to this. I appreciate the city of Springfield's partnership. With that, are there any other questions from the board? Commissioner Lichen?
No questions, but I'd like to move approval of Order fifteen dash oh-four dash fourteen dash oh-eight in the matter of authorizing the county administrator to sign agreements with the city of Springfield and the Swanson Group Manufacturing LLC to extend the property tax exemption, two years for veneer peeling and plywood layup mill in downtown Springfield area.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion of the motion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you very much. And with that, we have about four minutes. If you have one more announcement you want to sneak in there, Mr. Mokra Hyske, before our time's certain?
I'll take it. The last thing I wanted, it was great to see Mike Coles and Bryce here this morning to talk about the LCAD Cares program. And glad that they're highlighting that. I've had an opportunity to familiarize myself a little with that program. And it's really, I think, a great example of the commitment that our employees have, not only to doing great work while they're here, but to volunteering in the community. This is where most of our employees live and own homes and pay taxes themselves. And they really are committed not only to the work that they do, but to the community that they live in. So we, of course, all look forward to participating and supporting the LCAD Cares program and other initiatives like that. And I wanted to share with the board, I had an opportunity, one of the most enjoyable things for me in this role in the last year has been the opportunity to go around the county and meet with our employees in different work groups and see them in action and experience the work that they're doing for our residents. And so two Fridays ago, I had an opportunity to have lunch with our waste management staff and tour the transfer station in Glenwood, tour the landfill, and tour Quamish Prairie. And it really was a great, it was a little rainy, but a wonderful opportunity to see you. You may have an impression of what you would think that individuals who work in a waste management function may, the attitude that they may bring or the approach that they may bring. And I was really just blown away at the, how excited and passionate they were about the work that they do, from the customer service staff to the recycling staff, to the individuals out at the landfill moving the waste around. And as we had lunch, you know, you can get a feeling for the morale and the pulse of a group just by looking at the demeanor. And everyone had smiles on their faces and they were excited to be doing the work that they do. And I think that translates, you know, we get, we have over two-hundred-and-fifty thousand customer contacts per year at our transfer stations, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand customer contacts. So many of these, you know, these are residents of ours that are going more than one time per year. But we have a, that's a, you know, those are locations, all the transfer stations, that our residents come in contact with our organization. You know, got a good handle on our recycling program, which is nationally recognized and easily recognized as at least the number-two recycling operation in the state outside of the Portland metro area. And some really great programs. I forwarded the board information about our reusable dishware program, where you can actually, at no cost, borrow reusable dishes. Anyone in the community can do that. It's a unique program that we provide here in Lane County and really outstanding. And then touring the Quamish Prairie operation, which is a wetland mitigation project adjacent to the landfill, the Short Mountain landfill. And it's really an outstanding, not only, you know, have we planted over a hundred thousand camus bulbs in that location, over six hundred students per year are in our community. High school student, middle school, high school, and college-age students have gone out and participated in educational opportunities, day-long, week-long programs with our staff out at that wetland mitigation project. So a lot of great work happening there. And I just wanted to share with the board something that we don't, we sometimes talk about the fees or the operations related to that. And there's really some outstanding individuals and outstanding work that's happening in our waste management operation. That's it.
Thank you. And, you know, a rainy day might be a little bit better than Commissioner Stork's and I last toured, which turned out to be the hottest day of the summer last year of the landfill. So, moving on. Item eight A, which is Order fifteen oh-four fourteen oh-nine in the matter of accepting funding in the amount of not to exceed one million from Trillium for development of a federally qualified health center site in a location to be determined. And we have Alicia, well, I guess Alicia's not going to take a backseat. We have Karen Gaffney from our Health and Human Services. And I'll turn it over to you, Karen.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, I just, I would like to declare a potential conflict of interest. My wife works for Trillium. Duly noted. Thank you for making that declaration.
Good morning, Chair Bozovic and Commissioners.
Mr. Chair, just a second. How are we going to handle these things in the future? In the past, when we've had people say they have a conflict of interest, we've had different ways of handling it. I just want to clarify, is that the right way to handle it, that a member of the board makes a declaration that they might have a conflict of interest and then they're participating in the meeting? Or how do you want to handle it? Because we've handled it in different ways. I just want to clarify how we're going to handle it.
Well, it depends, it somewhat depends on what the agenda item is. Because if we're in a quasi-judicial procedure, then there's a different way of handling it, you know, land use item. But under an item like this, under, and I'm going to look towards legal counsel on this, under state law, it's up to the individual board members to declare a potential conflict of interest and then to choose whether or not to remove themselves from the board meeting based on their feeling of need to remove themselves from that action item. And that's a personal decision of each board member. So it's not a spelt-out procedure. So, you know, Commissioner Farr has given the board notice there's a potential for conflict of interest, and it's up to him personally to decide whether or not he wants to continue to sit during this board item. Is that an accurate statement?
Chair Bozovic, Commissioner Storkson, that's an accurate general statement in addition of the ethics, the ethics issues. And I believe, even before I got here, that it has always been a very personal issue with each individual commissioner in terms of that, given that scope of things. You're correct. If you were sitting as a quasi-judicial fact-finder or decision-maker, then the issue of recusal comes in, which Commissioner Storkson, I'm sure you're familiar with that, where a judge would recuse themselves because they have the kind of interest in the outcome of the decision that could affect it. And it's up to the individual commissioner. You could either, Commissioner Farr has declared his conflict, so it's up to him to whether he recuses himself or he simply declares and proceeds.
Thank you for that clarity and thank you for the question.
All right. I'm going to start again. Good morning, Commissioner Bozovic and Commissioners. Our plan this morning, I'd like to first introduce, I know Terry Copeland, the CEO of Trillium, has been at this table before. And I'm pleased that he's back again today, particularly to talk about such good news with you. We like that. Our plan this morning is I want to give a little bit of background, particularly for those who are viewing on television, and then ask Terry to talk with you some about the access-to-care issues and other things that have brought Trillium to this particular place of offering to partner with the county in establishing a new community health center. And then also talk about some of the other opportunities in terms of the Community Development Fund that we've been working on. And then I'd like to tell you a little bit about next steps, assuming that we move forward with this order, what you can expect coming forward. So that's our plan this morning. As I said, we've had the opportunity to talk with you on other occasions about the partnership that has developed between Lane County and Trillium in creating our local coordinated care organization. And it really is one of the high points of the work the last several years in Health and Human Services. And really creating what is in fact and feels like a public-private partnership, to really leverage the strengths of both sides of those systems, to come together to provide the very best coordinated care for people who live in Lane County who are eligible for the Oregon Health Plan, which Terry will talk more specifically about those numbers, but is in excess of one in four people in Lane County who qualify for the Oregon Health Plan right now. We've done a number of partnerships together, including our work as county staff to be co-located at Trillium and provide the services to coordinate behavioral health care for people on the Oregon Health Plan. We have public health staff who work closely with the staff at Trillium on prevention initiatives in the community. And we have three of our county staff who serve on the Board of Directors at Trillium. So it really is a partnership to figure out what the burning issues are in the community and then how do we work together to really address those. One of the issues we've talked about in the past is access to care. And last year, Trillium and the county worked together to open up the Brookside Clinic, which is our fifth community health center site. It's located on Seventeenth and Chambers, and opened last August and was able to serve an additional six thousand of Trillium's Oregon Health Plan members for primary care and integrated behavioral health services. That was in addition to our two other large clinics, the Riverstone Clinic, which was our first clinic, a little more than ten years ago now in Springfield, the Charlton Clinic here in Eugene, and then smaller clinics at Behavioral Health and over at Springfield High School. So what brings us here today is an opportunity for the county to partner with Trillium and receive support from them for startup funds for a sixth clinic in the community. Again, a federally qualified health center as part of our community health centers in the community. So at that point, I'm going to pause and let Terry talk about why he would like to enter this partnership.
Thank you. As Karen says, I'm Terry Copeland, CEO of Trillium Community Health Plan. So Chairman Bozovic, Commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you today about this issue. You have a sheet of paper in front of you that shows the number of members that are currently covered in the Trillium's Oregon Health Plan. But I just wanted to reflect back on some of our, a little bit of our history. In January of two thousand and fourteen, there were fifty-seven thousand members on the Oregon Health Plan in Lane County. As you may or may not recall, by March of two thousand and fourteen, there were an additional twenty thousand members that had come onto the plan. And then a month later, there were about twenty-seven thousand total. So at that time, we had saturated primary care in this community with this new membership. But keep in mind that those people were still here in the county, even though they weren't covered under the Oregon Health Plan in January of two thousand and fourteen. These were people who were underserved in health care or not served at all. Some folks we had brought onto the plan had been twenty years without seeing a physician. So the contribution of being able to get access to primary care and behavioral health has been huge. But the problem in April of two thousand and fourteen was that we had, I seem to recall, about twelve thousand folks who we weren't able to find access to care for. So we came to you guys, we proposed making a grant to the county who had agreed with your permission to build a new clinic, which they did remarkably. It was up and running in August two thousand and fourteen and took on an additional six thousand members. We also put together grants for other primary care clinics throughout the community to be able to expand their capacity. And by the end of the year, all members that had come onto the plan in two thousand and fourteen had been assigned to a primary care medical home. It was an amazing piece of work that really required the entire community to accomplish. So in January of two thousand and fifteen, at that point, we had ninety-one thousand people on the Oregon Health Plan in Lane County. Today, as you can see, we have just over ninety-seven thousand, rounding to the nearest thousand. The sheet that you have, it's broken out about what type of coverage that they have. But ninety-seven thousand members in Lane County, when we currently have eleven thousand four hundred of those that we haven't been able to find primary been able to find primary care yet and 757 of those are children, 11,456 are adults. So we have exhausted, I think, the capacity for offering bonuses to providers because they simply have no more room. We can only focus at this point on expanding capacity in our community. Expansion of this capacity actually helps everybody, not just Oregon Health Plan members, but I believe that there are additional folks in this community living in poverty that still are not covered under the Oregon Health Plan. We are somewhere between a quarter and a third of the population of Lane County that's living in poverty and are being serviced, currently being served by the Oregon Health Plan to get coverage for their healthcare. So our job now is to expand, is to be able to encourage the expansion of primary care capacity in the county. What we're proposing is that Trillium offer another grant to the county of up to a million dollars to build yet another community health center. I know a great deal about these community health centers because the first four years, 10 years ago, when the first community health center, FQHC, was started, I served on the advisory board for the county to get that FQHC, that community health center started and so I worked with the county and with Steve Manella and other committee members really to help develop it. This is an effort that's close to my heart and something that I know that brings value to the community. So that's going to be, that's part of my proposal. The second piece is that Karen and I and others with the county have been talking about the possibility of setting up a community health fund that would be managed by community members, including the county and that we would put this fund in the Oregon Community Foundation as a directed fund with a committee to direct the use of those funds and it would be for the benefit of members in Lane County, particularly for Oregon Health Plan members that need services that are not covered by the Oregon Health Plan. Originally, we had strategized around making a contribution of $2 million to this fund and that would result from our discussions and negotiations with Centene Corporation, which I'm also happy to answer any questions about that you guys have with our parent company's merger with Centene. But the deal was that Centene would contribute 1 million and then Trillium, our agate resources, the parent company of Trillium, would contribute 1 million. While trying to find the money for the funding for this clinic, we've, in our discussions with Centene, they've agreed that they would still contribute 1 million if we take our contribution, our, meaning agate's contribution, out and use that million to fund a new clinic. So we're currently looking at setting up a community fund in the Oregon Health Foundation, our Oregon Community Foundation, for a million dollars to be directed for the use in Lane County. So all of these things are tied together, but the essence of it is that we're trying to get access to care for Oregon Health Plan members and knowing that the Oregon Health Plan really doesn't address all of the needs of these people in poverty and we want to set up this other fund that we would like to make available to the community to use.
And I think before I necessarily launch into what happens next after you pass this, maybe this is a good place to pause for some questions and comments and I would say that one of my other activities is I serve as the co-chair of the State Medicaid Advisory Committee and I've been there for three years now and as I watch what's happening in Lane County, I think this really is how it's supposed to work and it makes me proud to be in this community, to know that we have formed a partnership that is functional and really finds those opportunities to work together. There are tremendous benefits that the community health centers can bring to the table in terms of providing access to care and there's no way that we would be able to start up a new clinic right now without the support of Trillium. So it really is a wonderful opportunity, not only on this particular project, but looking forward into our community benefit fund and being able to sow those seeds for the years into the future too. So are there questions or comments about this piece so far?
Commissioner Farr.
Thank you, I have a couple of questions, Mr. Copeland, Ms. Gaffney, about the need in Lane County. Mr. Copeland, you mentioned that between 25 and 33 percent of all people in Lane County are living below the poverty level. We have, we all know we have one of the lowest median incomes of all counties in the state of Oregon and Oregon has one of the lowest median incomes in the nation as a state. That puts us in a particularly vulnerable position. The sheet that you handed out, Mr. Copeland mentions a total membership of 96,000, none of them 73 members, they're OHP members. Can you describe that membership briefly?
Yeah, as, well, as you can see that the benefit package is broken down among those members, but the population itself is a very, the acuity is high in terms of their healthcare needs. It's a sick population, there's a lot of diabetes, a lot of diabetes, a lot of asthma, there are a number of folks with disabilities that we cover, there are women and children. So it's a population that is very difficult to really work to increase the health of the population, but that's really our goal, is to improve the health of this population of folks through our coordinated care effort, through our integration effort. Some of the key elements of this is that this is also a population with a high acuity for behavioral health problems and so the integrate, the work that the county has done with us in working toward integrating behavioral health services and primary care has been key. Does Commissioner Farr, does that help too?
That helps paint the picture of the people that you are serving and they're mentioned as OHP members of the OHP. Now, it's, I presume then that there are people who otherwise wouldn't have private health plans or wouldn't be able to afford to give their family healthcare without the services being provided.
Chairman Bozovic, Commissioner Farr, that's true. These are folks who would not otherwise have access to health coverage, health insurance, would be getting access to care really just through the emergency rooms and non-compensated care in the hospitals.
Thank you and you know, through my work with the other counties in Oregon, I've heard that our CCO has been particularly aggressive and particularly successful in signing new members up. Can you describe that a little bit?
Commissioner, we think our CCO has been successful in many areas and I'm sure that we are the best CCO in the state. That's a vote of one. But we have been successful in signing up new members, but our community has more difficulty with access than many other communities around the state. Except for maybe Cape Falls, who also is struggling with getting access. I think we have one of the areas that's the most challenged, to find enough primary care physicians to cover these members.
And that's a big one.
I was just going to add one piece and take this opportunity to give a shout out to the community partners who really have worked very hard to get people signed up for the Oregon Health Plan. So there's been an enormous expansion, of course, across the state, but here in our community, we have a fleet of OHP assistors in a number of the nonprofit organizations, we have several in the county, both in public health and at the community health centers, whose focus really is to identify people, many of whom have been uninsured, as Terry said, for 20 years, maybe haven't had regular healthcare, who are eligible for the health plan, may not know how to sign up for it and really help them through that process. So we do have that community support, even though people may not sign up for coverage through Trillium, we're working hard to get them covered and then Terry's working hard to find them primary care.
And I'd like to say I'm pleased to work on the National Association of Counties Health Steering Committee and met with them for about a week this year and hearing of the work that we're doing in partnership with our CCO, we really, I think it's not just a vote of one, Mr. Copeland, I think universally, people really recognize the partnership that you have described, Ms. Gaffney, that really is unprecedented and unparalleled, not only in the state, but really nationwide and the fact that we have 11,000 unassigned adults, that is the reason, the need for an additional facility in order to make certain that we're able to address not only have the people sign up, but also have access to the service. Very good. And one last call out that I'd like to make and that is you mentioned that you work with Mr. Manella, Steve Manella, and I believe, am I correct in that Mr. Manella's ideas originally were the ones that created federally qualified health centers?
In our community, I won't give him credit for the national movement of federally qualified health centers, but certainly 12, 13 years ago, when we didn't have a community health center at Lane County, it was Steve's work with the Latino Medical Access Coalition in particular, to really pull together a proposal so that we could have the infrastructure for the FQHC here at the county. So yes, Steve was instrumental in that.
And I wanted to make sure that we had that call out, understanding that Mr. Manella works tirelessly and quite often doesn't, we see the work that he does and we don't always see the depth and the breadth of the work he's been able to focus on our county. And I believe Representative DiFazio does go a little bit beyond the state of Oregon when he praises Mr. Manella's work. Thank you very much, Mr. Copeland, for the presentation and thank you for the work that you do in partnership with Lane County.
You're welcome.
So I have Commissioner Lytton and Commissioner Sorenson in the queue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I know that we have been very excited about the attachment of SRS to the Medicare Doc Fix It, but I think the really good news on that as well is that there's quite a bit of money for federally qualified health centers in that bill that passed the House, 392 to 37, so that is actually very good news on that. I thought Commissioner Farr touched on something I think is very important. I really appreciate the work that, between Trillium and our staff and the CECO itself and how successful it has been and I think this is a very important issue to move forward on. But I really think, what I really want to comment on as well as just the fact of why are we here in the first place? I mean, that's the part that's probably most disappointing, is that we're having to do this in the first place and I really appreciate the fact that we are able to and that we have the infrastructure in place, I think that's going to be key. But it tells me that not just Lane County, but Oregon has a long way to go and to be catching up to different parts of the country. And at one time, you know, we had such a strong and vibrant economy here in Oregon at one time and now we're just continuing to struggle over and over and over again. So I really appreciate the work that you're doing to step up to make sure that there is access, healthcare access for folks who just, they just literally can't afford it. And there's no reason why we should be pitting people to, you know, trying to figure out, do I, do I make sure my family's checked, make sure I'm checked out, just for something that maybe is, we almost find just obvious, or do I make sure that the next meal is being put on our table? And so that's, that's the piece that's important, but I really go back to the fact, when I look at the total membership, when I look at the unassigned adults, that number is extraordinarily high, it's too high, but the fact that you're able to come in and hopefully deal with this is going to be very important as we move forward. So I support this, is moving forward, but it just tells me we have so much work to do and when basically one county is the economic engine in the state of Oregon, that's challenges and of course Washington County is the major, the major focus with some of the ports and others, but you know, you just hear the, what happened to Port of Portland, I mean, overnight practically, they just lost an entire shipping container business. That's going to affect us, that affects the entire state and that's hard to get back, by the way, because once they get used to going Puget Sound and San Francisco and just ignoring the Port of Portland, those, our other ports in Cusco, Benaestoria and so and so forth are too small. And so that's going to be very challenging to get back in the future. So thank you for the work you're doing, but it also tells me that we as a board and we as a state, we have a lot of work left to do to make sure that folks don't necessarily have to be in this position, but great work. But I did want to call out that the Medicare Doc Fix It, there's money available in the, for the federally qualified health centers in that bill and while we are excited about the Secure Real Schools attachment, as we should be, but there's, it's great news, I think, for our human, our Health and Human Services staff as well as Trillium and the work you do, but thank you very much for the work you're doing, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Sorenson.
Thanks very much. You know, going over the Trillium website, I think one of the things that's really exciting about what you're doing is the whole idea of the coordinated care organizations and I guess I'm going to ask these questions on behalf of the public that has heard these big terms, you know, in the national debate about what to do about healthcare in the country and even in our state. So just, Terry, I just want to ask you a couple of what I would call basic questions. Could you describe the relationship between Obamacare and the coordinated care organization that we have in our community?
Well, that's not a short answer, but I will give you a summary, Commissioner.
We haven't heard the term Obamacare mentioned in today's discussion yet. The public watching this goes, what's this got to do with Obamacare anyway?
Frankly, this train was leaving the station before the Affordable Care Act and would have proceeded along these lines with or without the so-called Obamacare. Certainly the environment in Washington assisted then Governor Kitzhoffer to get a grant or pilot money from CMS to help start the coordinated care organizations, but I think that's the primary link. I think also the structure of the coordinated care organizations is also very much in line with what the federal government calls accountable care organizations or ACOs.
Do we have accountable care organizations in Oregon, separate from the coordinated care organizations?
I think there are a few small accountable care organizations, but also know that the CCO is really just a Medicaid ACO or a Medicaid accountable care organization. In fact, I was talking to the folks from the Utah program yesterday who are, they have, they're constructing very similar organizations, they're simply calling them Medicaid ACOs, but they're very much like the coordinated care organization in Oregon. There was a delegation from Alabama that was up in, that was in Portland and visiting both the Oregon Health Authority and some of the, some of the coordinated care plans. They're constructing a system that's really patterned after Oregon's coordinated care organizations as well, but those are, those are really ACOs. So there is a connection between the Affordable Care Act, how it's structured and what we're doing here, there's coordination between the two, but this process was really started by Governor Kitzhoffer prior to that and in fact, some of the legislation was even in place prior to the Affordable Care.
Now, your organization, Trillium, is involved in other communities and I see on the website, serving Eugene, Springfield and the following counties, Benton, Clackamas, Clatsa, Tushoots, and I won't go on, but it seems like about half the counties in the state. Could you describe what it is you're doing there that's different than what you're doing here?
In those counties, what we have is a dental plan. So we don't have physical health in those, physical health or behavioral health coverage, it's all dental and it's a it's all dental, and it's a commercial, it's not a Medicaid.
Oh, so it's a, an insurance plan for people that live in those counties who want to purchase the dental insurance?
Yes, that's correct.
But the coordinated, the heavier coordination, I would describe, between dental, mental health, physical health, all of that is what we're talking about today?
Yes, sir, that's all in Lane County. We have recently received approval to include the Lower Unqua Health District, and Douglas County is part of our CCO, so that's a bit out of our county area.
But still within our CCO?
It's still within our CCO, and within our, really our service.
Okay. And the material you handed out with the 96, almost 100,000 people in Lane County that are covered by Oregon Health Plan, again, what's the relationship between Oregon Health Plan, the coordinated care organization, Affordable Care Act, and Cover Oregon? What are those terms, and how do they affect the 100,000 people? That's like a third of the population of Lane County.
The Cover Oregon is the federal exchange, which is offered to individuals and small businesses or small groups. That's for, again, commercial insurance, and I use "commercial" to indicate a plan that's where the policies are sold to individuals. So these are not folks that are government, although there are some government subsidies in the plans, these are really individual products that you might buy for your family, for example. So...
I probably wouldn't, because I work for an organization that is bigger, so I probably wouldn't, but...
That's true, but...
Many of my friends that have their own private businesses would be those kind of people.
Yes, Commissioner, that's true. So those are, that's Cover Oregon, which many of you probably know is going away because of the really material failures of the software system of the state. But the program, though, the exchange still exists, and it's just, is currently run through the federal exchange system, but the state of Oregon is actually contracting with the state of Kentucky in one to two years to start moving those, moving that products out of the federal exchange into the Kentucky's software program, which addresses the rumor that we're moving our plan to Kentucky, which is not true. So that's the Cover Oregon piece. The Oregon Health Plan versus the CCO, Oregon Health Plan simply refers to the benefit package that these members have. It's part of the Medicaid, special Medicaid program that the state of Oregon has under a waiver program with the federal government, and so these are all Oregon Health Plan members. The CCO is really a description of the plan, this coordinated organization, the plan that provides coverage and access to care for these members who are Oregon Health Plan members.
And last but not least, maybe a simple question. You're operating a private health insurance company, but you're contributing $1 million to provide healthcare for people that otherwise would not be able to afford healthcare. How do you have $1 million lying around that you could do that, and secondly, why would you do it?
Well, as it turns out, the $1 million wasn't lying around, Commissioner, but we were able to find the money, and the reason we would do it is because the way the contracts are structured with the state is that we get a capitation payment every month to cover these members, and it's our responsibility to provide access to care for them. And in fact, we're under contract to do that. So we have reserves that the insurance division requires us to build up, so we have to have a certain profit margin to go to those reserves, but we also put reserves in addition back so that, for other issues such as this. In this case, Agit Resources, the parent company of Trillium, actually has the, is contributing a million dollars, not Trillium. So it comes with the, again, the negotiations with the parent company, Agit Resources, and Centene, who together are putting together its $2 million package, and we're pulling a million dollars out of that $2 million to move back to Trillium, or to move to Trillium, and then provide a grant to the county.
And if I can just add a little piece to that, I think, again, particularly for the viewing public, when we use terms like insurance company, I think that conjures up one particular structure, and it's not necessarily what a coordinated care organization is envisioned to be. So as I had mentioned, there's a Board of Directors at Trillium, our coordinated care organization, that as the governance body includes a whole lot of community people, including three members from Lane County, including our public health officer, all of whom have fiduciary responsibility to make sure that not only is the care provided, so we need to make sure our members get access to primary care, but also that we're making decisions that are taking us toward, what I know we've talked with you about before, is the triple aim. So that's really the north star for these coordinated care organizations, is how can we simultaneously improve the quality of care, that healthcare that people receive, improve the actual health of people in the community, and then do all that while containing or reducing costs? And so it's that triple aim that really guides all of the decisions that the Board of Directors makes. The county is represented on all the committees, including the Finance Committee, and the whole, the Executive Committee, the structure, we have representatives from others in the community, nonprofits, senior and disabled services, other stakeholders who really are invested in making sure that we reach that triple aim in Lane County.
And Chairman Bozovic, Commissioner Sorensen, when I talk about an insurance company, because we carry risk, we're required to have an insurance license, and, which means we're regulated by the Oregon Insurance Division, and they, which is the same regulations that every, we must comply with the same regulations that every large commercial insurance company must. So that's when I refer to insurance company, it's because we have that license.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Stewart.
Thanks, Mr. Chair, and Mr. Copeland, thank you for this wonderful opportunity and being here to explain it to us. Doesn't seem like it was too long ago you came before us with that very first opportunity, and what an incredible opportunity it was, and what an incredible outcome, most importantly. And so it's great to be able to duplicate that again, and hopefully crack that barrier that we're hoping to be able to provide a provider for those other 11,000-plus people, and we know that it's going to grow, but appreciate that. And I also want to thank the folks involved with forming that Oregon Community Foundation Fund, fairly knowledgeable on OCF and what they do. What an incredible opportunity for Lane County. I assume the resources will be directed to be used in Lane County, and also it's a fund that grows.
That's correct.
Most of the funds that I've seen that are established, there's great staff in OCF that are continually offering opportunities for folks that are looking for places to make donations, and they come in with their specific desires, and I would imagine there's going to be folks that want to donate healthcare provision, and they'll be able to direct them right directly to this fund. And so the exciting piece is to watch it grow and increase the amount of service that can be provided each year to folks that don't have resources. So that's just an incredible opportunity, and I want to thank the folks that thought of that and are willing to make that commitment. And your partnership with us in healthcare provision has been great, and I want to thank you for that.
Thank you, Commissioner, and I would just say that I believe that fund does have an opportunity to grow, and I hope that we can leverage all of our relationships with other health plans who do business in this county, to help participate in growing that fund, because it's a privilege to be able to do business in Lane County, and I think particularly if you're in health insurance, you should be, have an eye toward helping out with the uninsured, as well as the low insured.
It seems to me like our healthcare providers here that have the opportunity, it's to their benefit if they have extra resources to contribute to this fund, because, you know, they have some level of obligation to serve people, and there's a lot of people that they write off that they've given service to, and if at some level you could create this huge fund that essentially gives reimbursements to people for its giving now and hopefully being able to receive in the future, so hopefully folks will understand the potential here and will step up and help out.
I have one more question for you.
Before we jump to your question, I just want to remind the board and do a little bit of a process check here. We have one more agenda item coming up after these two, and we have a lengthy executive session, and I know that one of our board members has a commitment at noon, so what I'm going to do is kind of call an audible here and say that we're going to pull exec session at 1:30 after our lunch break, so we don't try and rush that exec session before noon, because it's looking like it's going to be close to 11:30 before we wrap up. And so just, so that the folks listening in up there in county council know, it looks like it's going to be 1:30 in the BCC for exec session. Commissioner Farr.
Yeah, I hope this is a brief question. Brookside opened last summer, and from the time we announced it, to the time that we opened it, there's a relatively short period of time, as I recall, just a couple of months, actually.
So it was about six months of work that went into that. I don't remember exactly at what point we came here for that process, but if we can get it done in six months, we call that a huge success.
It seemed it to me, and it was done through a similar process to the one that's being prescribed for the upcoming new clinic.
Yes, Commissioner, we are hoping to apply all of our learnings from that process to make this one be even smoother.
May I ask, and which one, what was the FQHC that opened prior to Brookside?
The one prior to that would have been the Charnleton Community Clinic.
And how was that one funded?
The, now I need to go back through my brain, that's years of data. I know at one point we were able to get a new access point grant from HERSA, and so it might have been what helped open that site, but I would hate to be held to that.
Okay, but I won't dig into that, but this seems like a pretty swift process to get lots more people receiving the primary care. And just one last point is that you mentioned, Mr. Copeland, the dearth of primary care providers that we have in the area. It's not the dearth of clinics, which we are addressing, but we actually, the professionals who provide the primary care, we have an ongoing lack of numbers in professionals, and I know that your organization is working on trying to attract more professionals to this area one way or another, and I'd like to encourage, and at some point in the future, maybe we could talk more about how do we as a county find ways to get more primary care professionals into our community, other than by hiring a county administrator who brings his wife along with him?
Commissioner Farr, I think that would be an outstanding conversation, and we are offering grants as well to private clinics to be able to help them, encourage them to expand their capacity and open up new provider areas.
And I know that some conversation has been ongoing regarding a residential internship possibility in the county, and that's, I think that's pretty complicated, far above my head, but...
Yes, Commissioner, it's a long-term goal, is to be able to provide a residency here, so we've been working with, particularly with Peace Health, and with, it requires also some national federal legislation, and so we've been working with a federal delegation and with folks throughout the state. But again, that's a long-term solution, and there is some state legislation right now that begins to address this issue of being able to create another residency program.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chair. Best of leveraged luck with that process.
I'll have a few questions myself here, but before I get my question, I just want to say that, you know, the 96,000, or almost 97,000 folks that are needing assistance in their healthcare and health insurance, that represents over one in four people in Lane County. And I think it's just a kind of a sad statement that, you know, economically, we can't drive enough family wage jobs that include health benefits to take up that slack. You know, 11,000 people represents, you know, maybe six or 7,000 households. Boy, it would be great to, instead of having to build a new clinic, to actually employ that many more people in Lane County instead. I have two questions, and I'll keep them separate. The first one is, my understanding is this new clinic will probably be in the metro area, which will be, you know, fifth or sixth clinic now in the metro area, is that an accurate statement?
Chairman Bozovic, we looked at the data of where these 12,000 people who don't currently have assignments, where the bulk of them live, and that is in the metro area. And I know at the same time, one of the board's priorities is really trying to improve access to care in the rural communities, so we need to be able to do both of those things, but in terms of having enough population, this clinic is likely to be in the metro area as well.
Okay, I kind of asked that question, because I know we're adding the Lower Unqua portion of Douglas County, which puts the population on the coast that already, you know, Florence is an hour away from the metro area, and then, you know, Reedport is even further, and that area, so, and I'm also aware that there are no pediatricians on the Oregon coast in that area. You know, that to get to a pediatrician from Florence, you must come to Eugene, so the need for a facility on the Oregon coast is pretty dire right now. So as we look for opportunities, that would be, I'd be interested to see what we can do there. My second question is about House Bill 3300, and I don't know if you're aware of that bill or not, but it's basically a bill that requires any healthcare provider to take a certain percentage of OHA patients, basically.
Chairman Bozovic, we actually, Trillium did go up and bring a team to testify, and that bill narrows, is slightly narrower than that. It says if you're going to take members of PEB or OEB, then you also have to take members of the Oregon Health Plan.
Right.
So that, it's not every doctor, but if you're going to, if you're going to take those plans, you also have to take some percentage of Oregon Health Plan.
Right, right, sorry, I should have been more specific, but one of the interesting things about the bill, and this kind of leads me to what the question is, they base the percentage that those providers have to take on the percentage of folks that aren't served in FHQ. Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Right, that they kind of take those off the table first.
So as we build a new facility, it's going to be federally qualified, we actually lower the percentage of folks that that bill may require to cover. So we're kind of, you know, do we, I guess we'll probably know where the bill goes here in the next two weeks before we build a new clinic, but it'd be interesting to understand the impacts of that kind of legislation will have on our demand for a clinic, and whether or not there's a, you know, how that goes moving forward, because it does, you know, the more people we provide for under this bill, the less percentage they're going to require, you know, health providers to take, if they're serving those other two sets of clients, which quite a few health providers do, because those are fairly high-reimbursed clients.
Chairman Bozovic, I believe they removed those percentages in the most recent amendment.
And I would also say, Teri and I have had many conversations over the years about really trying to strike that balance, because I know I believe we need to have a single healthcare delivery system, and we should not set up two different systems, one for people who live in poverty and one for everyone else. So we want to make sure that all of our community providers are engaged in serving this population, and at the same time, as Teri said earlier in his presentation, we have just saturated the existing providers in terms of numbers of assignments. So I think in actual, in actuality, we're going to have to do both in order to get all of these people placed. I don't know if you have anything to add to that.
Yeah, Chairman, we, as I said, also, we are providing grants to other clinics to expand their capacity as well, and in fact, we're offering, or working with another clinic, that's a commercial clinic, that would build a new... clinic, that's a commercial clinic, that would build a new facility and provide capacity for an additional 8,000 OHP members. So the work is being done on both sides, both for the county side and with the private sector as well. I think, I think this, this OHP Medicaid parity bill, which is 3300 is called, has a rough road to travel because there are some large organizations who would not want this bill to pass. But it also has a fair amount of traction.
Yeah, it was, I was actually at that hearing waiting to testify on another item and it was kind of interesting. I don't think it was really strongly received by, by the committee. So, and I was looking at the dash one amendments earlier and they still contain the percentage. So it'll be, be an interesting conversation moving forward about that. The real issue, I think, is residency and getting more providers. I mean, that's the real issue is that the shortage of primary care providers and dealing with that. So I appreciate the conversation. Any further questions for, before we move on to next steps?
All right. Chair Bozovich and Commissioners, I'll be brief and then again, happy to answer any questions for you. As you may remember, since we did this only a year ago, there are lots of moving pieces in trying to get a new clinic up and running. And actually it takes support from across lots of departments in the county in order to make this happen. So the first step today is, would be for you to authorize accepting these startup funds from Trillium and extending the contract with Pivot, who will do the feasibility study on a building. The next step then you would see, assuming you vote yesterday, is on one of your very, I think it might be your next meeting, we have a list of additional positions. As we've talked about today, it's going to take us a little bit of time particularly to recruit providers. So we'd like to establish those FTE that we'll need right away so that we can get our recruiters working hard to get those providers here. And then soon after that, we'll come before you for permission to sign a lease with a building. Again, given the time constraints and really the pressing need of getting this clinic open as soon as possible, we're not looking at purchasing any new buildings. We're going to lease and remodel a site. So that's kind of, we wanted to move that as quickly as possible so that we can get the renovation at that facility started and the staff hired. So that's what you can expect to see next from us. And again, with our hope that we can open in the fall, certainly before the end of the year.
Thank you. With that, do we have a motion on the order? Or any other move approval?
Second.
So it's been moved?
Let's clarify that. Are we just talking about the first order?
Yeah, I was assuming we're, that's the agenda item we've been on.
1504, 1409.
Yep.
Because it's companion, there's 10.
Right. So I was assuming that we were dealing with 09 first. So that's, it's been moved and seconded to approve order 1504, 1409 in the matter of accepting funding in an amount not to exceed 1 million from Trillium for development of a federally qualified health center site in a location to be determined. Is there any discussion to the motion? Seen and hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Moves on to item B, which is the companion order. Any discussion?
I'm going to stay here for B.
So do I have a, any questions about the companion order? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve? Commissioner Lykan?
Mr. Chair, I move approval of order 15-04-14-10 in the matter of applying for and approving acceptance of a Health Resources and Services Administration grant in the amount of $1 million for the development of an additional community healthcare site.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion to the motion? Seen and hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Miss.
Thank you, Commissioners.
And moving on to county council, I will say we're going to go into exec session, probably going to recess out of this before lunch and then go into exec session at 1:30. And I don't believe there's a need to come back out of exec session and make any decisions at this point. So we'll probably adjourn the board meeting from exec session. That said, let's move on. Any other, was, any other issues county council? Then we'll move on to commissioners' business announcements. And I want to start out and just mention that the agenda team discussed this morning, next week's process in dealing with the interviews for the sheriff's position. And I just want to make clear that on Wednesday, we will get, the board will get the applications and on Tuesday, there'll be a brief item where we can adjust this process on Tuesday if necessary. But what we're envisioning on Wednesday is there will be an opportunity for public comment at the beginning of our meeting on Wednesday. And then we will conduct the interviews and this will be held up in the Board of Commissioners conference room. We'll conduct the interviews with each applicant there where they'll have an opportunity to give five minutes of an opening statement and introduction. And then there'll be questions from the board while the other applicants are not in the room. And, but this will be on camera, the interviews. And we'll do each applicant until we're complete there. And then we'll move into executive session to deliberate on that, whether we're ready to make a decision and the process, et cetera, that we are allowed to under executive session. Then we'll come back into open session to make any decision on an appointment or to make any decision on further process needed. So that's kind of what we're looking at process-wise. So there will be on next Wednesday, open interviews on camera. And then there will also be executive session where we'll have an opportunity to deliberate on, on that personnel hiring decision. So any questions about that? And we will also have the opportunity on Tuesday, once we understand how many applicants we have that met the minimum qualifications to adjust that process on Tuesday. But I just wanted to make sure that the public knew far enough in advance about what the process was going to be and the fact that we are going to schedule an executive session that day. That said, any other announcements from the board? Commissioner Stewart?
Thanks. I had two items. I wanted to ask the board for support or direction. The first is, today during our public comment, we heard a kind of a challenge from Elcat Cares. And I would like to propose if the board would support that we each consider a $100 or $200 donation to that challenge, to the Habitat for Humanity. That would get us anywhere from $500 to $1,000 contributed to, I'm willing to put $200 in if, if there's others.
I'm in. So I will chime in here real quick. I, I will contribute to the cause, but I'm going to contribute out of my personal funds. I don't think it's proper to, to take county money and use it for charitable donations. There was a, it was a difference when we used our office funds in, in support of some of the, the Egan Center needs, you know, because that is a county-funded program. In this case, I think this is an outside charity that we're donating to. So I'm, I'm going to be willing to support at least at $100. I just got done with a fairly hefty lift at, at the Looking Glass Auction this weekend. So I don't, that's about my personal ability to contribute to charity right now. And it may change in the next month or so, depending on how quickly I get my tax returns back. But I am not going to utilize my county office funds for, for this. I'm going to use my personal funds. And Commissioner Lykan and Commissioner Sorensen in the queue.
I think, did you have another one, Fay?
Yeah, I have, but Commissioner Sorensen, you want to respond?
I just wanted to say that I'll ask Ms. Jones to send $200 of county funds from the South Eugene Commissioner account to support this.
Perfect. Thank you. My, my second request is, as I was notified, and I'm sorry for the short notice, but on May 2nd is the tree planting festival weekend up in Oak Ridge. And they are honoring a World War II POW. And there's going to, that person's going to be the, in the parade, recognized as the, I guess, the grand marshal of the parade. And then there'll be a opportunity to recognize this individual following the parade. I would like to ask that staff would help prepare a resolution that the board could consider next week. Just a quick and easy recognition of this individual that I could present at that tree planting festival on May 2nd.
Do we have acquiescence for that? Looks like we have some, at least three, I see, myself, and Sorensen. So you have.
I'm sorry, I don't have the individual's name. I left, I purposely set it out so I'd bring it down here, but I'll let you know who that is. And then.
Thank you.
I just, I wanted to personally thank Steve for, he, he bared down and visited Cottage Grove twice, I think, here in the last week or so. He attended the Blackberry Pie's monthly meeting and was their guest speaker. And then last Friday, he was the guest speaker on the Beeper program. And I want to thank you for your outreach and your effort to connect with the citizens throughout Lane County. I've heard nothing but great things from folks that have come up to me and said, wow, it was great to hear you on the radio. It was great that you came to the, to the group. So I really appreciate what you're doing and having nothing but positive results. I would like to let folks know that if you're on the Beeper program and potentially on the dangerous, dangerous Jacob Daniels slash Country Cameron show on Monday afternoon, that it looks like both those shows are going to be videotaped and they will be rebroadcasted in the future on, provided there, there's enough energy in the, in the presentation to be rebroadcasted on the channel 14.4 in Cottage Grove under the South Lane Community Broadcasting Station. So anyway, there might be an opportunity for viewers in South Lane County to, to get to witness this on that channel in the future for our participation. So, thank you.
Commissioner Lykan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of things. April 23rd, so the Ways and Means, Joint Ways and Means Committee is doing a roadshow around the state. And April 23rd, they're going to be in our area. They'll be in Springfield. Location, we don't know yet. We believe it's about 6:30. That's what we know right now. If you're interested in participating, I believe the person is handling the, because I think a lot of the focus is going to be on transportation. So Franny Brendel from the local Odon offices is kind of handling the logistics on that. So if you're interested in participating, contact Franny on that. And then finally, I just want to say that Springfield, we lost a longtime member, Rob Adams. I've known Rob for so many years and every time I saw him, he used to sing the Adams Family Song. The only one D and not two. But the Adams family was so involved in public service in our community. His father, longtime city councillor, his mother served on the Springfield Utility Board. His ex-wife, Lori, is still a school board member. Rob is a former city councillor, but his love was Willamalein Park Recreation District. He will have a service next week at the Rob Adams Park in Springfield, which is there in the Mountain Gate area. But Rob is just a, a great community member. In fact, we credit a lot for Rob. He was on the planning commission back in the 70s when they really started planning out so much of the successes that have gone on in Springfield over the years. And he was a terrific planning commissioner. I mean, that, this is something he really knew, knew quite well. And, and so, sorry, he suffered from long illness and, but he passed away this last weekend. And, and so, but I just wanted to just mention that. He was just a, a great, great guy. Entire family was an incredible service to our community.
Commissioner Farr?
Thank you. A couple of things. First, I had a chance this week, like you, Mr. Mokrize, to visit a transfer site. The one I transferred, visited was Bolton Hill. And great job they do out there. The lady who operates the booth there had no idea who I was. I was just helping, just, you know, taking some trash and recyclables. And she was exceedingly helpful, directing me, telling me, helping me actually sort some of the recyclables out and make sure that I recycled as much as possible. And at the conclusion of our business, she gave me a homemade cookie that had been given to her by one of her customers. So she took cookies from a customer, gave them to another customer. So I don't suspect every employee gives out cookies, but I was particularly pleased, especially did a superb job. And she's reflective of the employees that work at the transfer sites and in the department. It's remarkable the work that they do. So thanks for bringing that up. The other thing I'll point out is that last week, on April 9th, we had a regional discussion with the Housing and Urban Development Regional Director, Margaret Salazar. She called, what she called a leadership round table. And it was all across the street at Elkhorn. We discussed a lot of things. And what it really pointed out was that HUD is beginning to listen even more closely to the obstacles that are presented by the way they help us with our housing needs locally. And some of the things that come up quite often is that quite frequently HUD's regulations and paperwork and other, other requirements present obstacles to actually getting the housing to the people who need the housing as quickly as possible. Very receptive to that. And I'm optimistic about the direction that HUD is, is moving right now. We had a presentation by our own Jacob Fox on rental assistance demonstration. And Jacob is, we all know, and I'm finding out even more about how highly regarded he is in, in the realm of providing low income and, and subsidized housing. So looking forward to our years of working with Mr. Fox. And significantly, we talked, we began talking a lot about what are called tiny houses. Mostly they're houses that are just a few hundred square feet, two or three or 400 square feet that meet all living requirements that HUD does, has been a little bit reluctant to fund. And also, we're, they're difficult to build in metropolitan areas because of local codes, some of which are rained down from the federal government. Tiny houses offer a step above, the two, two focuses of tiny houses. One is for people who are currently homeless or inadequately housed, giving them a relatively inexpensive to produce step of housing that is non-existent currently, that's a place for people to live with dignity in a nice dignified home, small, you know, two, three, four, 500 square feet, but certainly adequate for people to, to meet their personal needs as far as sanitation, food preparation, et cetera. But the other focus of tiny houses is wealth building for homeownership, a first step in owning a home that ultimately could lead to larger homeownership, or it could be the final step and a perfectly adequate step that it may be. It's a discussion that's going to be taking place throughout the community is how do we facilitate the growth of tiny houses. That's just the name that they're assigned, is tiny houses, in the community for wealth building and also for providing housing to people who are inadequately or unhoused at the current time. It's an exciting step and HUD was, is beginning to talk about it. They heard discussion on that at length last Thursday. So it was, I just wanted to point out to you, Mr. Mokrize, that, that Jacob was there, did a really good job, acquitted himself. He didn't have to acquit himself. He presented himself very nicely and, and really added to my personal esteem for the work that he does. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Welcome. Any other announcements from the board? I just want to take a moment to note that Mr. Mokrize is going to be in Florence tomorrow. So not only is he going to Cottage Grove, he's going to Florence where we're going to be talking to the Kiwanis and doing an interview on KCST radio, I believe. So, you know, he's getting from one end of Lane County to the other. So I really appreciate the outreach he's doing. And I, well, I'd say I'm sorry to hear about Rob. The, the Adams family is also standard poodle aficionados. So.
Yeah, that's very true.
So we have, we have a connection. And Lori actually sold me my first home in Eugene. So, yeah, long time. So with that, I think we're.
I just wanted to give a big thank you to all the people that were involved in Friday's City Club of Eugene presentation that Ms. McKinney and I made. And there was a lot of work that went into that presentation by a lot of people and thought it was well-received. Mr. Mokrize made the long trip from here to the Eugene, to the Downtown Athletic Club, all within the South Eugene district. And so I appreciate the interest on the part of the City Club of Eugene in, in hosting Ms. McKinney and myself to make the presentation. But, you know, the, the people that are up there doing the talking are the ones that the news media might. media might write the story about, but it takes a lot of people to pull those presentations together and do the work, so I appreciate that.
Thank you. There are no further announcements. We'll move on to item B of Commissioners' Business, which is Order 1503-3107. And we, in the matter of approving the extension of the Temporary Lane County Internal Audit Charter and Temporary Internal Audit Committee, directing the performance auditor to conduct an enterprise-wide risk assessment and discussing recommended six-month goals for the performance auditor. And our very patient, Shonda Miller, is here, our performance auditor. And good to see you back in health. And that took a lot of patience waiting for your item to come up, so I'll turn it over to you.
Hello, Chair, hello Commissioners. It looks like also I've cleared the room.
Thank you so much.
I won't take that personally. There are three items to discuss as part of this, and there's a recommended motion. The first item is to extend authority for the Temporary Performance Audit Charter and Temporary Internal Audit Committee. The second one is to get your support and direction to conduct an enterprise-wide risk assessment, and I'll talk a little bit in a moment about what that is. And then also, then the third thing is to discuss recommended goals for my first six months. So the first item, extended temporary guidance, in August of 2014, the board approved an order authorizing establishment of a Temporary Lane County Audit Charter and Audit Committee. And those two things were to guide the performance audit function through the end of this month, April of 2015. And I, my understanding is the intent was that for the hired auditor, myself, to help in creating the permanent authority, working with the Temporary Internal Audit Committee, and then getting final approval from the board for the permanent authority. And the intent, I believe, was to give the auditor six months to do that. Part of the motion and order today is to extend the authority of these through the end of August of this year, although based on the discussion today, we may choose to extend that even beyond August, so we can talk about that. As of now, through August would give another four and a half months and two audit committee meetings between now and then. So I want to talk a little bit more about the first item in terms of extending the temporary guidance, but I'd like to actually give my ideas for now for the permanent authority. I thought this might be a good opportunity to share some of my ideas and maybe have a short discussion with you. And again, this is just to begin the discussion. We've got some time to have further meetings, and I'll be meeting with the audit committee, as I said, to work on the permanent authority as well. So the, there's two main ideas that I'd like to share today. One is that at a minimum, well, first let me back up. So sort of to guide the permanent authority, I've, you know, researched best practices, I've talked with other internal performance auditors. And sort of to guide this, the authority for the performance audit function should be explicit in protecting the performance auditor's independence, impartiality, and objectivity in conducting their work, so decision-makers and the public can rely on the auditor's findings and recommendations. So kind of starting from that premise. So at a minimum, I would propose that the authority for the performance audit function become part of Lane Code. I think there's three options for the authority. Right now, the performance audit authority is part of the Lane Manual. So that's one option. The other option would be to make it part of Lane County Code. And then the third option would be to have it as part of a county charter amendment. So sort of three different levels of legal authority. And at a minimum, I propose that the authority for the performance audit function become part of Lane Code. I think, and I can't remember if I mentioned, but right now, the authority is part of Lane Manual. And I believe that only updating Lane Manual versus obtaining a higher level of legal authority could leave the performance audit function vulnerable to any sudden changes of values and beliefs of county leadership, the current county leadership. And a stronger legal authority would sort of go into the future, even beyond my time as a performance auditor, beyond county leadership. And a higher level of legal authority would better ensure that the function, sorry, I'm just repeating myself. So I also did some research, there's four other counties in Oregon that have an internal audit function. Two of the counties have the audit authority as part of a charter amendment, that's Multnomah County and Washington County. And also, both of those counties have elected auditors. So their auditors are elected versus appointed. The other two counties are the Chutes and Jackson County, and those, the authority is part of their county code, and the performance auditors are, or the internal auditors are appointed. So just to give you some background on that. And just to note, I do not think that having the performance auditor be elected is the right approach, and there are pros and cons to having an elected auditor, and I can go into that if you'd like, or if you have questions about that. So if the board agrees to work toward establishing permanent authority as part of either the Lane Code or a charter amendment, the board may want to extend the temporary authority beyond August, so we can talk about that. The motion that currently is today has August on there. And then I'll be working with the audit committee on drafting the permanent authority and bringing that to the board. We'll kind of work through that process over the months. The second thing that I wanted to highlight is with regard to the audit committee, the most independent form of an audit committee is an independent citizen-based committee, appointed by the governing board, and it may also include board members, may or may not include board members. A citizen-based audit committee, one that is independent of management, is the most independent form of an audit committee, because having management as part of that committee, the managers, the functions that managers oversee and that may be audited, it's recommended that they not have authority over the work of the auditor. However, managers may participate as non-voting members. And at a minimum, I would recommend, if we do include managers as part of the audit committee, having it majority citizen-based. So at a minimum, doing that. So those are sort of the two ideas that I have moving forward. Welcome to hear your thoughts and discussion. And we can discuss that now, or I can go ahead and run through, the other two items are fairly short, so I can run through those. So the second one is to get board direction to conduct an enterprise-wide risk assessment. And at the last Board of County Commissioners' Meeting that I was in front of, Commissioner Sorenson actually inquired about the process for selecting audit topics. And my belief is that the best way to do that is to conduct a risk assessment. And the definition of a, or what an enterprise-wide risk assessment is, is a process for identifying and assessing potential risks or missed opportunities to the achievement of an organization's objectives.
So Shonda, if I can interrupt, you threw a lot at us in the first items.
Oh, okay.
Why don't we kind of deal with at least questions about that item?
Oh, sure.
And we'll move on to the next two, if you don't mind. So, are there any questions about the issue relative to Lane Manual, Lane Code, or actual charter? Commissioner Sorenson?
I think that we should take an incremental and cautious approach to this, and I would favor looking at some Lane Code language that would be based upon what other counties do, either in their charter, the language from their charter, or the language from their code. But I would favor moving this along for, as a code provision at first, and then seeing how that goes before launching into something else.
I just wanted to say that I agree with that assessment and your recommendation. I would, I would like to, you know, as you move forward, to see it put into code. You know, it could eventually go in the charter, but that's a vote of the people, and I would rather see us clarify that we want it in the end, put that in the code. So that would be the direction I give.
Commissioner Lichen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I would agree, because I think the thing that I saw immediately was the end of August 2015, and is that enough time?
If we're gonna, when I first drafted this motion, and of course, I, this was supposed to come to you a couple of weeks ago, and I got ill. And when I first drafted it, I thought August would be doable, but at that time, I was thinking of, right now, it's part of Lane Manual, and I was thinking, well, you know, making a change to Lane Manual, I could probably do that within four months. But then I started doing the research more and realizing that I think the best practice would be to make it part of code, and so I think that it would take longer. I'm thinking the process, because even with the code change, we would need to have two public readings, is my understanding, and so I think I would recommend having the temporary authority go, I would say, even through December, and maybe if we could get the code approved to begin like January 1 or something like that.
So I would totally agree with Commissioner Sorenson, Commissioner Stewart. The thing is, I think is, maybe with the, instead of looking at like end of August, like a specific date, seems to me, maybe working through the agenda team. And so you can kind of go with this scheduling, come up on how you want to approach that. I, you know, plus in August, I mean, that's, you start going through vacation time, and you know, we'll have downtime, you know, with here and our board. And so I just wanted to make sure you give yourself plenty of time on this before coming to the board. So I appreciate the, both Commissioner Sorenson and Commissioner Stewart, I think just kind of taking it easy, but then work with the agenda team on this scheduling, on when it comes back.
Right.
Commissioner Farah?
Thank you, Commissioner, Chair Bozovic, and thank you, Commissioner Lichen. You know, our authority ends April 30th, so that's part of the reason for asking for the extension today before our authority extends. So I think extending the temporary, the charge of the temporary committee until whatever date, and then we can look more, in more detail at the schedule that is required to get this into code in an adequate fashion. I think December probably wouldn't even be long enough, to tell you the truth. I think we may want to look into January, February, or March of next year, in order to make sure that you have an adequate time to get this in place correctly. But in the meantime, I do believe we need to pass a motion today to extend the temporary authority of the existing audit committee. So, and then as far as, as far as the discussion surrounding placing it in code as opposed to a charter amendment, or having it remain in the manual, I think code is absolutely the appropriate place for it to be. That way, it can be changed with less, you know, with less formality, with a certain amount of formality, mind you, but not with less formality than a charter amendment. And your comments on an elected auditor, all kinds of issues that I perceive there, making it a more or less political position as opposed to a.
Right.
As opposed to a.
There's pros and cons to it. They're more independent, but yet there's the potential for political influence and things like that, yeah.
So what I would look for today, perhaps, is just the extension of the committee's charge, allowing you more time to put more thought into this. And you say you're repeating yourself. I don't mind you repeating yourself, Shonda. We've been waiting, not just a month, we've been waiting years to hear you talk. Take your time. We're all at all times. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And I, first I'll say I agree with that Lane Code is the proper place to put the language. I think that's a charter amendment, if it was an elected auditor, that's the correct place. But this is a board-appointed position. The board is the, you know, the one that has authority to change Lane Code. Of course, it takes a lot of public notice and a vote of the majority, so it's not something that happens overnight. Whereas Lane Manual is actually at the direction of the administrator, who is an appointee of the board also. So it's an appointee of the board, changing, has the ability to change language, that governs another individual, independent appointee of the board, is not the correct place to hold that authority. So I think, you know, and of course, Lane Manual changes do get, you know, come to the board also, but it's not quite as large a process. But I think, I understand that where you want your authority to come from is directly from Lane's, you know, legal authority, which is Lane Code. So I think that's the correct place to have it. I also feel like we do need to pass the order today, and in that order, it specifically states through the end of August. So when we do get a motion, if somebody will note that, you know, through the end of December at least, when, you know, to amend the order to say that, I wonder if we get to the point of a motion. But we did a couple of other things before that, because the motion, the order also includes the enterprise-wide risk assessment we haven't talked about yet. But I think we're heading in the right direction. I understand the need for the extension. And of course, we're doing the temporary, the temporary committee and the temporary charter. At any time before December, we get to the point where we can adopt a permanent one, it will supplant this temporary authority extended out to December. And of course, if we need to extend it beyond December, sometime between now and December, we can take up a similar motion like we did today and extend that authority. So I think I'd support, you know, that portion of the order and that portion of your presentation so far. Any other questions on that, Commissioner Lichen?
So this is maybe to Chair Bozovic, to you, and maybe to even Commissioner Stewart, Commissioner Sorenson, as our senior members of the board. Would it make sense to break the order up so that maybe the Order 1503-3107 is the actual extension, and maybe come back with the other, or are you, or are you comfortable with what the order as is? And I'm going to look to my colleagues on this to just maybe ask that question.
Personally, I'm fine with the order the way it is, provided we support the other two items.
Yeah, yeah.
No.
Yeah, yeah.
We may be amending the order a little bit more, depending on the.
If the only amendment's the date, I think the order is fine as read. And I don't think it's a significant enough change to have to put it back in public. So, any other discussion on that particular portion of the presentation before we move on to the enterprise-wide risk assessment? Back to you.
Okay. So I'll just say again, an enterprise-wide risk assessment is a process for identifying and assessing potential risks or missed opportunities to the achievement of an organization's objectives, or to the achievement of program objectives. And I've got methodology for conducting this risk assessment, and really, the idea is for it to sort of highlight areas in the county that are sort of, that would be high-impact audit topics, high risk of their objectives not being achieved. Also, I would also look at high risk for any inefficiencies that may exist within programs or departments. And also, I would be looking at key issues facing the county that represent a large portion of the county budget and that would lead to the greatest benefit. So sort of weighing out, sort of how big's the impact of a particular issue with regard to funds associated with that program, but also looking at impact to the community and to the services being provided. So I've got a methodology that I'll be, well, I'll be pulling from different sources on that, and expect to have a risk assessment completed three or three months, and then be able to then from that, come up with audit topics, proposed audit topics for a proposed audit plan for fiscal year 2015, 16, maybe a little bit into that fiscal year before we get the plan approved, but that's sort of the ultimate plan. And again, working with the audit committee as well as the board on that audit plan. And then the third item is to discuss recommended goals for my first six months. And yes, I'm already two months in, but I've drafted some goals that I see would be good for myself and sort of recommend. be good for myself and sort of recommend, and then so just hearing any discussion that you may have on that. And I'll just run through them really quickly. Develop a strategic plan for the performance audit function. And actually, I've already drafted this, and I'll be sharing that with you later this week, and I'll be sharing that with the Audit Committee as well. The second two items really have to do with the permanent audit authority. As I have it written, may change, but really, those are to do with revising the permanent audit authority. And then conduct, and that's probably beyond six months, but conduct an enterprise-wide risk assessment and develop a proposed audit plan for fiscal year 15, 16. Build positive working relationships with county leadership. I've actually had the opportunity to meet with all of the county directors and have had great conversations, and all of them are very supportive of my role, which is great. And then the last item, begin work to set up a fraud tip hotline, so lane county employees, vendors, and others can anonymously report suspected cases of fraud or theft of county resources. And this is something that was brought up by the external financial auditors a couple of years ago. And Mike Barnhart had started the process for, for this, and he wanted to wait until the performance auditor came on to help kind of shepherd it through. And I'll actually be giving an update on this on Thursday at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting, but we'll be moving forward to get that implemented by the beginning of the fiscal year, the coming fiscal year. So that's, that can move pretty fast. So that's, that's all I have for recommended goals. I'm happy to hear thoughts or any other goals you may have, too.
Great. Commissioner Stewart?
Thanks, Mr. Chair, and Ms. Miller, thank you for sharing your goals and what you've laid out. I think that they're all good and direct to what you want to try to accomplish in the next six months, and that's, that's great. I did want to share with you one item, and I support the enterprise-wide risk assessment, too. One thing that I'd like to maybe place in your consideration of an area to look at or a function to do is sometime back, I've had some work with constituents, whether it's in developmental disability services or mental health services in the residential programs. And I think it might be good for us to look at and make sure that our county, county code regulations that we follow are, at least match or fall into the state law, make sure that, you know, we're performing those functions, and they're up to date with, you know, legislative changes. And also, it was, it's been brought to my attention, too, that individuals that are under the care and brought into these programs essentially have tenant, individual basic rights. They come in with individuals' basic rights, and just want to make sure that the, that there's no conflicts between what we're doing and the individuals' basic rights tenants that they have under the state when they're put in this care. So I'd like to have the committee see if that's worthy of, you know, how it stacks up with, you know, what they recommend, but I'd like you to at least place it on for a conversation and see if it's worth, worth pursuing some research in that area, just to make sure that, that we're, you know, we had a situation, I think the board was all aware of, that it wasn't necessarily us, it was the state that came in and removed some individuals in a, in a facility, the hearing center. And so I just, and I've experienced that in developmental disabilities, and I just want to make sure that, you know, the folks that were involved were concerned that maybe, maybe laws were different between county and state, and, and individuals' basic rights were being violated. So I just, I don't know, staff has researched it pretty extensively, but it'd be nice maybe to see if a separate set of eyes could look at it and make sure that we're doing everything appropriately, which would be great.
Okay, I made a note of that, and I also just want to say that I welcome hearing audit ideas at any time, and then I'm happy to bring those to the Audit Committee, because we'll, we'll be vetting, I'm sure, quite a, quite a few items, but it's always good to hear ideas for audit topics.
Appreciate it.
So thank you, yeah.
Any other questions and discussions about the enterprise risk assessment or the six-month goals? I'll just say quickly, I think the, the idea of an enterprise risk assessment's a great way to guide audit topics in, in the future, because I think that's really, you want to look for where you're going to get, where we are most at risk and get the biggest bang for the buck on a performance audit. I also feel the, the, the goals that you've outlined match up with what I'd like to see you're working on over the next six months, so I appreciate both ideas and support both, and keeping them within the order that, that we have, the draft order we have proposed. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Farr?
Just a quick question. Mr. Mokrheyske, we have a risk manager, Lisa, and Lisa Lacy, in conjunction between the, work between the auditor and the risk manager. I suspect that that's just a normal element of the auditor's work, is making sure that coordination happens within department, existing departments, existing organization.
Yes, I think the auditor certainly, as, as the auditor will interact with really all of our staff throughout the organization, leaders throughout the organization, different functions as they may come across. I certainly imagine that our internal performance auditor will work with our risk manager as well as other appropriate staff to identify, you know, where there are, where there's analysis being done in certain areas that the risk management function may come in contact with, or other things. So I think the board should know, if you don't already, that the risk management function has been transferred to county council, and so it's now under the county council's scope of operational responsibility. That was something that we did in the last several months. We felt like that was the right place. It used to be in county administration, we felt like it was the right place for that operation to be.
Thank you. That was my presumption. Thank you very much, Mr. Mokrheyske. Mokrheyske, excuse me.
Any other questions or comments? So is somebody willing to make a motion and changing, and not forgetting to amend the, the date? Commissioner Stewart?
Actually, I'm, I'm sorry. So Andy Clark is here, and he, he has a, I think, a question for me, if that's okay.
Okay, that's great.
And I guess it's just an issue generally for the board. I've looked at the order for this packet. I don't think anything in the order sort of puts in stone where essentially the job description for your auditor should live. And I caught part of the discussion when I was upstairs about where it ought to, whether it ought to be in the code or the manual, and just, I just wanted to be here if there are any questions about that, and I guess give you my two cents, that traditionally, that sort of thing has been in the manual, in the lane manual, rather than the code. Both the manual and the code, as you know, are in the control, under the control of the Board of Commissioners, county administrators in charge of the APM, and so that wouldn't be appropriate place for it. But in terms of the manual or code, the manual has been traditionally where we've spelled out sort of the job functions and duties. The difference with the code is normally it's, for example, the prohibitions and rules, land use stuff, you know, the laws of the county, what prohibition kind of things. And as you know, it takes a first reading and a public hearing in order to make any changes to what's in the code and amendments there. The manual is still by board order, but doesn't require a separate reading 13 days apart, so I just want to address that.
I always looked at the, at the code as our statute, or our version of ORS, and it's our, you know, would basically describe that we will have a performance auditor function and who appoints that maybe. And then our manual is basically our OAR, our administrative rules, that, you know, staff writes and the board adopts by board order. So they, it actually may need to live in both places, and I think that's not a bad thing. But I do, I do support the idea of having a portion of describing that there will be a performance auditor and all that actually in code versus in the manual. If that, if, and there may be need in, further in the manual to describe, you know, job duties and do further than that, but that, that's the way I have, I've always personally viewed code manual. And I'm sorry, I made a mistake. I was thinking APM when I mentioned it, that administrator, so I apologize for making that, misspeaking that way earlier. Were there any other questions about code manual while we got counsel here?
Just a clarification, the manual is adopted by board order.
That's right.
This does not require a public hearing to do so.
Correct.
Unlike OAR, which isn't adopted by legislative action.
Right, right. Yeah, and it's, it's, it's not a direct analogy between the ORS and the OARs, because both our manual and our code sort of, a certain policy that gets implemented one or another. I don't have any issues or concerns with what you spelled out, though, Commissioner Bozovic, about a brief recitation in the code that we have a performance auditor and general description of function, and then the details of it. Makes more sense to me to be in the manual, to the extent that you're going to be changing them, it's, it's less processed, you can do it more quickly and adjust more quickly, especially early on in there.
And just to make sure, the, the manual changes are done by board authority?
Yeah, in both cases.
Not by administrative authority?
Right.
Which the OARs can quite often protect.
Correct.
Thanks.
The order, there's not a specific date in the order itself.
The order actually has, mentions August.
Okay.
So, Commissioner Stewart?
I would attempt here to, like to make a motion.
Yeah, there it is.
That we approve Order 15-03-31-07 on the matter of approving the extension of the temporary lane, lane county internal audit charter and temporary internal audit committee, directing the performance auditor to conduct a enterprise-wide risk assessment and discussing recommended six-month goals for the performance auditor, with one amendment to extend, change the date from expiration of the committee, the internal audit charter, or committee to, from August to, let's go with December 31, 2015.
Second?
And I just, I just confirm, thank you, Andy, for coming down and sharing the comments. I, what I kind of felt we were talking about is she was wanting to get traction, we wanted the code, manual, different things. I would assume that all this is going to go through the committee, and a recommendation is going to come to the board, so I certainly understand what you're saying and, and would probably expect that if we just codify that there's going to be internal audit, auditor in the code, and then, as was explained in the manual, more, more functionality of the position would, would be appropriate.
So if there's no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
And I'm going to excuse Commissioner Lichen, because he needs to be somewhere by noon to make a presentation. And we have just review of assignments, because I think we already jumped the shark and did our agenda team request early. And I will go to, I'll go to Mr. Mokrheyske for review of assignments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we're continuing the conversation.
Yes, I appreciate that.
The only, the only, and I did step out, I was pulled out from one of the individuals who had public comment this morning while you were concluding the discussion about the federally qualified health center. So if I missed something, any assignments on that, please let me know. Otherwise, the one assignment that I heard was a resolution for the tree planting ceremony, which Commissioner Stewart will provide us the name of the individual, but that'll be four, so we'll follow up on that. That was the only item that I heard, unless, again, I missed something on the FQHC discussion.
No, I don't believe you missed anything there.
Actually, there was one thing, perhaps, it wasn't really an assignment, a discussion regarding the dearth of primary care professionals in Lane County, and at some point, a discussion that we would, as a board, discuss what, as a board, we could do to help alleviate that, the issue that we have surrounding the lack of primary care professionals. And I did tongue-in-cheek say, other than hire an administrator with a spouse who...
I was going to say, I did my part, right?
Yeah. You were pulled away when he said that, so you missed, you missed that comment.
So we can add that to the, you know, just that, the potential of a discussion if we're bringing forward another work session item related to that.
Yeah, I will note that we are having a legislative update next week, because Legislative Committee met on Friday, and there are several bills pertaining to trying to address that issue that may be part of that legislative update, so we may get part of that discussion next week. Any other assignments that we missed? Seeing none, I will then, I'm going to recess us until 1:30, where we will meet an executive session.
Upstairs?
Upstairs, in the Board of Commissioners' conference room. And the Board of County Commissioners will meet an executive session to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiations and to consult with council concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. The executive session is held pursuant to ORS 1926602D and H, which allows the Board of Commissioners to meet an executive session for the purposes listed above. We do reserve the right to come back out in a public session should the need arise, but right now, we are not projecting that need based on the items coming before the board, and will most likely adjourn the board meeting from executive session, and we will reconvene in regular session, we will have our next meeting in regular session next Tuesday at 9:00 a.m. So I will now recess the board, and we'll reconvene at 1:30 in the Board of Commissioners' conference room in executive session. Thank you.